Okay, it is 6:30. I am going to read something and then I'll call us to order. As authorized by Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code, this meeting may be convened in a closed executive session for the purposes of seeking confidential legal advice from the city attorney on any item on the agenda at any time during the meeting. The city of Bastrop reserves the right to reconvene, recess, or realign the regular session or called executive session or order of business at any time prior to adjournment. It is 6:30. I'm calling us to order. Tonight, we have two students from Bastrop Intermediate. We have Fallon Hall. She is in sixth grade. Fallon, you've got to stand up so people can see you while I talk about you. And she likes to play softball. And with her, she has one of her peers also from Bastrop Intermediate School, Jacob Anguana. And he is sort of happy to be here and kind of had to be made to be here. So he's looking forward to getting this over with. They're going to come forward. If you will all rise, they are going to lead us in both of our pledges to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored to represent Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the city, Texas, one state, under God, one individual.
Jacob, you did a great job. You did too, Fallon. Let's give him a round of applause. And tonight, on short notice, Shane Sorensen is going to be leading us in the invocation tonight. Pastor Brown wasn't able to be here this evening. So if you would all please remain standing, he'll do our invocation.
Please bow your heads. Father God, thank you for the opportunity for us to gather tonight to change the direction and lead the direction that the city is taking. Lord, thank you for putting leadership in place that has a vision for this community. Thank you that the work that we do here is led by your Spirit and at your hand. Lord bless the work that we do. May it be fruitful and lead Bastrop to a brighter and better tomorrow. In Jesus' name, amen.
Great job, Mr. Sorensen. Thank you very much. And Fallon and Jacob, you guys can go. I know it's a school night. And you did good. We have evidence you were here, so you are free to go. We're at the end of March, but I'm going to read a proclamation for April. I'm at 4A on the agenda for those of you that are following along. A proclamation of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, recognizing the month of April as Child Abuse Prevention Month for the city of Bastrop. Some of you know that I was a volunteer for CASA. And we have some fantastic organizations in our community, whether it's the Children's Advocacy Center, the CASA, the Court Appointed Special Advocates. There are a lot of organizations that help kids that really find themselves in a troubled spot. So if you will allow me, I will read this proclamation. Whereas children are vital to our state's future success, prosperity, and quality of life, as well as being our most vulnerable assets; and whereas all children deserve to have the safe, stable, nurturing homes and communities they need to foster their healthy growth and development; and whereas child abuse and neglect is a community responsibility, affecting both the current and future quality of life of a community; and whereas communities that provide parents with social support, knowledge of parenting, child development, and concrete resources they need to cope with stress and how to nurture their children will ensure all children grow to their full potential; and whereas effective child abuse prevention strategies succeed because of partnerships created among citizens, human service agencies, schools, faith communities, healthcare providers, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community; now therefore, I, Connie Schrader, Mayor of the City of Bastrop, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2018 as Child Abuse Prevention Month. I'm going to ask Chief Adcock if he'll come take this proclamation and we'll make some copies for the organizations that help our kids. Let's have a round of applause for the recognition of the importance. Okay, moving right along. My mayor's report. Have a couple things I'm going to cover before we do that. Do I need the clicker? Of course. Clicker, clicker. Okay, hang on just a quick second. Stay on that one, please. Three things I want to talk about really fast, I promise, Mayor Protem. Number one is Bastrop earned our recognition as 2017 Tree City for USA. So a round of applause for being a Tree City. And I also want to thank the municipal court. We had our warrant roundup. That was earlier in March. And it used to be a statewide thing, and all of the agencies would participate. And this year, for reasons that we won't go into, the municipal court did it with our own PD. And they were able to clear more than 50 warrants. And that just maintains civility in our community and cleans up things and is a great deal. And what I'm the most encouraged by is to see the municipal court and our police department working so closely together to protect our community. So a round of applause for those two groups. Okay, the next thing I want to talk about, because I get questions about it a lot. The last thing is my minute with the mayor this month, or this meeting, is about boards and commissions. You know that I made the assignments, the appointments. Couldn't think of the word. Appointments were made in June. And I know there are some folks on some boards that might be itching and thinking they're getting close to June. But I need to go over what the calendar is going to look like for this year. In June, the city manager is going to bring us a revised ordinance. And I know, council, you've all given some feedback. And I know that you've talked to some citizens about some feedback. But we are going to be making some revisions to our ordinances. In July, we will have our volunteer fair, where we'll have all of our boards and commissions set up with a booth so you can see what that organization actually does and if there's openings and what the requirements are to serve on that board. We're also opening that up to all of our nonprofits. So if you know someone in the community that wants to give back in the community, we're going to give them a vast array of choices. That will be in July. That date is set, and I really want to say July 17th, but I don't have my calendar open. In August, people will be filling out applications and we will do interviews. And then I will make appointments in September. And the appointments will be effective October 1st. And yes, it's not an accident that that exactly coincides with when our fiscal year starts. It was the 17th. So the fair is on July 17th. So when October rolls around and we have a new budget and we're starting a new year, that's when all the boards and commissions will have new people on their boards and commissions as well. So for folks that were wondering what was going on, that's what's going on. What that means is for the folks who are currently serving on a board that think that they're rolling off in May, there was fine print when they agreed to serve, that they get to serve until they're replaced and they won't be replaced until October 1st. So they're going to get an opportunity to continue to give to their community just a few more months. So just wanted everybody to know what was going on. Congratulations to Brandy Spencer. Brandy Spencer runs our Bastrop Housing Authority. And if those of you who watch all of these meetings, it was a couple of meetings ago where she presented. They score above 95. They have fantastic audit reports. She does a great job. I know they're going to do some, they may have done something the end of last week to recognize her. But I wanted everyone to know, there's not very many people that have 25 years with a company. And I'd like a round of applause for Brandy. One of the other things that we do, and that we did between March 13th and March 16th, was we met with the folks that we give community support money to that comes from VPNL. And I see Tresha, and we'll hear from her later today. But all of the nonprofits got together with myself and with the city manager. And we looked at ways that we could all work together better. And one of the things that we agreed to is a lot of times folks get to the community or someone finds themselves in a position where they need some help and they just don't know where to go. And it can be a difficult terrain to maneuver if you're new to the situation. So the city has agreed to provide links to all of the different organizations. So if somebody is looking for food or looking for housing, there will be links to all of the different organizations throughout the community that can help them. And we're real excited to pull that together. The way that it works for us to turn in our reports, like the report for April 10th will be due this Thursday. So there's this really short window between the meeting and when I turn in my next report. At our last council meeting, I had been gone all day. And on the left was why I was gone all day. My husband and I drove to Longview. And as soon as we get the front-end alignment done, I will be driving the '57 Chevy around town. And I just had to show it off. And Gary, it has a 283 four-barrel. So apparently that's important. On the right-hand side, both Councilmember Ennis and Councilmember Nelson were with me when I received my CMO, which is Certified Municipal Officer. That's a picture of proof that I really did get it and a picture on the right of me receiving that. And I was just really proud of that. And I'm so glad that as a community that we are involved in TML and our city attorney has made comments that it's always beneficial when the municipal officials are up to speed on what the rules and regulations are. If you go to the next page, those are the things that I was planning on doing.
Mayor, you left out one important component to that. And that is, what did you do to become a certified municipal officer?
Seventy-two hours of training and two hours of open meetings and Open Records Act training. So that's what it took. Hard to be any more self-serving than that. But I wanted you guys to know I was wearing my pen. So between March 17th and March 27th, these are all of the events that I went to. And next time we have a council meeting on April 10th, you'll see pictures from all of those different events. One of the things I'd like to draw your attention to is last Friday, with mixed emotions, we said goodbye to Wesley Brandon. We're very excited for his family, but we're already missing Wesley around the hall. But we have Mr. Jerry Palladie with us. And the city manager's going to introduce him, so I'm going to keep going. I went to several of the fundraising things. We did some really fun stuff. The other thing I did on Friday that is not listed on there, on Friday, March 23rd, was went to the Deep in the Heart Art Foundry Night Porch. And that was really cool. They do that every once in a while. And if you missed it, you need to keep an eye out for it because that was really a fun activity to do. I'm going to move on to the next slide, which has the things that I am planning on doing between today and the next council meeting. And there is one correction. And that is, it says on March 28th that there's a ribbon cutting at Anytime Fitness because of the weather forecast. That has been rescheduled to April 11th. So if you were planning on going to that, please come on April 11th at 2:00 PM. And I'd also like to include that on April 3rd, there will be a Wield Sports Plaza public meeting. It will be at 6:30 at Fisherman's Park. So that's on our website. There'll be two public meetings, but one of them will be between now and city council. So with that, Councilmember Ennis, do you have anything to report?
Thank you, Mayor. I attended the Main Street Board Meeting a couple of weeks ago. I will not report on everything they talked about because it is incredible how much those folks work on to keep our downtown going and to promote it to our outside visitors. They really work hard. And it's mind-boggling that the subject matter that they cover during their meetings. The other thing I would like to report on, the mayor showed it up on the screen, was the opening of two exhibits at our museum. The Cowboys and, was it? The Cowboys, Cows, and Cattlemen. And the Governor Sayers exhibit. They're both uniquely descriptive of our county. For those of you who don't know, Governor Sayers is one of the few Texas governors that is not buried in the state cemetery. He is buried up on the Hill in Fairview. We're very proud of the fact that he chose to be buried here. The state would like to have him in Austin. We have turned them down for many years. So go see the exhibits when you have a chance. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Ennis. Mayor Protem, shoot.
Nothing for me. Thank you.
Councilmember Jones?
Went to the Water Waste Water Workshop this weekend. And I'll let the city manager talk about that. But it is pretty impressive. Really, congratulations to the staff and to our city manager with all the work they've done. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Jones. Councilmember Nelson?
Nothing today.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes, Mayor, very briefly. I would like to take this time to say that it was a real honor to go out to the Federal Correctional Institute, I don't know, with 95, where the mayor and I walked and marched for about a mile and a half, which was, I'm truly not used to. But the march was for a very good cause. It was for veteran suicide prevention. And it's just a walk. And they walked for 22 hours out there just to bring awareness to suicide prevention. So it was just an honor for me and a merit to participate in that. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Peterson. He surprised me because he said, I'm going to, he was out there. He said, I'm not walking. And we all started walking. And pretty soon, there was Councilmember Peterson. He said, I'm not letting you people walk without me. So it was really nice to have him with us. All right, we are to the city manager's report.
Yes, ma'am. As the mayor indicated, Wesley Brandon left us on Friday. We had a wonderful potluck send-off. And last week, we are very fortunate that Jerry Palladie, who is with Palco ECS, has agreed to serve as our interim Director of Engineering and Development. Now, the interesting story about Jerry is I've known Jerry for probably 15-plus years. And I got to Bastrop and I get a phone call from Jerry. And Jerry says, "Well, I understand that you're now city manager in Bastrop." And I said, "That's right." He says, "I own property here in Bastrop in Hunter's Crossing." And I'm like, wow, that is a hugely small world. And he has his son and grandbaby here. And that's all important because when I tell you about Jerry's expertise, we wouldn't normally get somebody of Jerry's expertise and stature to serve in this position if there wasn't a much greater motivator such as a grandbaby. So Jerry is a registered engineer. He has a combined Bachelor of Science degree in civil engineering as well as construction management. And that is so very important because sometimes you can engineer something, but in order to construct it and understand how it works, you really do have to understand the full cycle of construction. And he has 30-plus years of broad-based experience in project management, whether it's engineering, design, construction, maintenance of municipal, commercial, industrial power plants. He's managed projects from several thousand to $350 million. Very extensive experience in all types of projects, from writing bid specs all the way to overseeing construction, all the components we deal with. And at the end of the day, in order to be in business as long as he was, he's had to manage relationships. So he gets great customer service. And more importantly, his extensive background provides a solution-oriented approach to development. And y'all have all heard me talk about the fact we've got three cities in one. And so a one-size-fits-all approach to development and growth certainly doesn't work here. So Jerry has agreed to fill in in an interim position. And we're going to post the position. In fact, Tanya's already started that process. Jerry has expressed an interest. So I told him he could absolutely fill out an application and we would move forward that. But I want an opportunity for Jerry to come to the podium so that y'all can see him, put a face with a name. He spent four days last week with Wesley, you can come on up, Jerry, to get familiar with all of the projects. Wesley left us with great instructions. So he is seriously immersed in that today. Trey took him back around to begin to have that additional conversation. So to say he's vested and already on the job is an understatement. So please join me in welcoming Jerry Palladie.
Thank you for that gracious introduction. And for a minute, I didn't know who you were talking about. But I do appreciate that. I did get to spend three days, four days last week with Mr. Brandon. And he took me around the city, showed me some of the projects upcoming, some that are active. We went back to his office, spent time there, all the things he was doing. And I must say, this is very exciting times for the city of Bastrop. And I'm very excited to be a part of it. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Look forward to working with you, sir.
Welcome to the team. Okay, for those of you following along, we're now at 5A. We're at the bottom of Page 1. Presentation of appreciation from Bastrop County Emergency Food Pantry regarding the Empty Bowl Project. Tresha?
Good evening, Mayor Connie, City Councilman. I'm here to extend a huge helping of gratitude to the city of Bastrop and especially the convention center staff. In February, you all know, we held our 14th Annual Empty Bowl Project. More than 700 people attended from all around. We generated more than $31,000 in support for the mission of the Bastrop County Emergency Food Pantry. Our success was a recipe of volunteers, sponsors, donors, chefs, artists, students, and very notable, the convention center staff. Our Board of Directors, staff, and Empty Bowl Planning Committee, we're extremely grateful for all the support that we received. And it was and always is an honor to partner with the city of Bastrop and your team. Thank you guys so much.
Mayor and council, this is a great example of where, when we talked last year about the funding that comes through Bastrop Power and Light in the form of community support. And I expressed to y'all at that time, and the mayor has referenced it, we put in our contract with all of our partners that we would have a quarterly meeting. And we would figure out ways that we could partner in some other way than just money. And so by us making available our convention center free of charge, they significantly raised money for their cause that they otherwise would not have had. And so what we were able to do through just being a good partner with a resource that we had, leveraged them hugely to be able to be more self-sustaining than just to check with us. The mayor has indicated that we had a meeting. And we're looking at links on our website. And so this is just a great reinforcement that when we partner with something other than our checkbook, pretty amazing things happen. And that's a pretty awesome story.
And I was going to say, all of these folks here are board and staff. And they came just again to give us a thank you that we wanted to give you guys tonight.
Tresha, why don't you and your board and staff stand so we can give you guys a round of applause for the hard work you did. Thank you so much. Councilmember Jones?
I do, I just, I want to say to you, Tresha, that you are one of the people that make this city amazing. I have so much respect and admiration for you. And it takes leadership to put that kind of a group together and accomplish what you did. And I appreciate you. We all appreciate you very much.
Thank you so much. All right, we're on to Page 2. And there's only three, so we're getting there. We're on 5B. And we're going to have a follow-up to our, it seems like it was just yesterday, but it was November 29th when we met about the chickens. I'm turning it over to the city manager.
Yes, and I'm going to ask Troy and the chief to come up here because we're going to do this kind of as a tag team. This evening, what we are going to do, Colin has put together a video that's going to kind of recap the November 29th meeting. So we get back in the mindset of chickens. And I want y'all to note that I'm wearing the same top tonight that I was wearing in the video so that we could literally continue the conversation. The chief is going to walk through the overview of the Government of Bermuda mitigation plan at that meeting. Herb Goldsmith gave us an option on what the government was doing. So we've reviewed that. Troy is going to give us an update of the contract we have with our trapper and what the schedule through next year is going to be. Colin has also produced a video to give people a perspective of what the trapping process looks like, hearing from our trapper some of the challenges that we are experiencing. And then to give you a perspective of where they're being moved to so that people in the community that love the chickens appreciate what a great home they have. We also, as we've reviewed some of the challenges to this process, we're going to present to you a challenge we have relative to our chicken sanctuary definition because we need some direction on how to fix that. There is a need, I think, for the chief to talk about the definition of cruelty to animals. There was a lot of conversation about volunteers helping. And I think we need to make sure that we are operating under the laws of this state so we don't let good intentions lead to bad results. Since our conversation about chickens, Troy has determined that a bill was introduced in the last legislature. We're going to talk about that because I think it actually provides some fairly good perspective for something we might adopt here. And that's kind of the lead-in to the fact that we need to make changes to our existing ordinance so it's easier to have caged chickens in your backyard because we make that kind of hard. And then Troy's forced to go and enforce an ordinance when they got free-range chickens in the front yard. So it puts us in a really bad spot. So we've got to work through that. And then I want to talk about the challenges we have with this topic so we can get a commitment going forward so I know how to deal with this in the budget. And then a proposed chicken sanctuary concept that maybe we can work toward. So that's the context of the journey we're going to take this evening relative to updating you on the chicken public meeting on November 29th. So Colin will kick us off with the recap of the conversation from that evening.
Okay, the problem. I think we should focus on the fact that the issue that needs to be dealt with here is the feral chickens that wander freely around town, not the domestic flocks that reside in the several traditional backyard coops that are in this area. And I think with proper management, I think we can take away enough of them to where there's still some for people to endure and not so many as to be a nuisance to the people who don't like them.
Currently, most of the free-roaming chickens and roosters have migrated west onto Jefferson and Bacon Street. They are no longer all in the protected zone. So let me tell you what life is like at my home. The free-roaming chickens and roosters are perched on my fence at various times during the day. Say around six or eight of them. Roosters fly from my fence to my large live oak tree in the front yard. Roosters fly onto my roof and slide down and around my roof. And roosters fly onto my front porch. Roosters, lots of them, six to eight of them, crow at 5:00 AM, 7:00 AM, mid-morning, 2:00 in the afternoon, and into the evening. It is extremely loud. There are roosters and chickens in my bushes by the front porch. And they have made a mess of all my flowers and landscaping. Furthermore, chicken poop is everywhere. The excessive noise level is a nuisance. And it's impossible to sit outside on my front porch anymore.
I am in support of either expanding the radius of the chicken sanctuary or at minimum allowing the status quo and current ordinance to prevail. The chickens have roamed the area for quite a while, admittedly more so now than when my dad was alive in the 40s and 50s, when there were more coops scattered throughout downtown.
If we could do a catch-and-release program of some sort to round up as many chickens as possible, move them to someplace where chickens are valued.
Chickens have moved west. There are a lot of roosters. I do understand that. Some of the suggestions that are I do understand that, some of the suggestions that have been made, we've gotta do something about the roosters. I don't know what that is. I recognize that they're a problem. I had some suggestions, but they've already been made, and I just support that we do something. We've gotta thin the herd. It's, we've gotta manage our wildlife.
My only solution is that they need to be removed, by any means, possibly a licensed trapper, but I want to see them gone. Thank you.
I heard on both sides of the aisle that there is an issue of too many chickens, especially roosters. There were, I think, a common theme to thin the chickens out, particularly the roosters. I think, going forward, that we are gonna have to deal with removal of chickens from those areas of town where they are not authorized to be.
It is a problem. I mean, it's, it's an amazing problem. I think what we come down to is what some of our citizens have said tonight, is we have several separate issues that we need to deal with. I'm strongly in favor of the sanctuary remaining, but we've got to make it more viable. We've, I mean, the little guys can't be expected to stay in that area if it's not habitable for them. We've got to solve that problem. And we've also got to thin the herd, so to speak, like Mayor Protem Schiff said. We can't have this kind of problem on Pecan Street like it currently is existing. I think we need to find a way to humanely capture the chickens. As I understand it, there are quite a few folks who, who will take the chickens.
The problem is the feral chickens. How do we control the feral chickens? What means are we going to employ to, to address the feral chicken issue? And also, whether or not people are feeding and watering the chickens and keeping them in that area that is an area that they're, for the most part, were not desired to be retained in.
We all know that we're overrun by roosters. It's gonna take a while, and I do know right now, the city does not have the manpower to do that, so we're gonna have to work on some different issues to try to come up with some ways to control this thing.
I'd like the city manager to go at this with addressing the roosters outside of the defined area as a, as a highest priority.
I'd like to direct the city manager to review the options that have been provided to us.
And we appreciate Councilmember Jones giving us the perfect segue into what those actions are going to be. So, at this point in time, the chief's gonna come up, and we've got a presentation here, if we can get to it. Can you pull up the PowerPoint? Colin, can you come back and help the, it, it needs to be on the slide up here? Oh, is it the clicker? Okay, you got it back to that, sorry. I'm in charge. Okay, let me just move us along. Okay, so at this point in time, the chief's gonna talk to us about the chicken mitigation plan that the government of Bermuda had put in place.
Thank you. Herb Goldsmith gave us an article that night that discussed Bermuda and the problems that they were having. I've gotten that article, I read it, I did a lot more research, there's a lot more stuff than that article just talked about, about Bermuda. Bermuda is a small island. They have approximately 30,000 chickens running loose, and so they have a lot larger problem than we do. They also have a lot of different lax rules than we do. A lot, they're the same thing. Half the people like them, half the people don't. They've thought, they've looked into taking the chickens and, and using the eggs, selling the eggs, slaughtering the chickens to sell, all of that they found was not cost-effective. It was just gonna cost simply too much. The reason why they got to that point is because, I don't remember the name of the hurricane, but I think it was like 1982, there was a hurricane. Came through, wiped out a lot of stuff, and wiped out a lot of the coops. Then the chickens ran free, and then, of course, they, Troy can tell you, but they, they multiplied 10 or 12 each time at about 20 weeks, I think, is their gestation period. And so, they, they multiply a lot really, really quickly, and so they got to that amount. The government actually stepped in, and now the government, they created an agency just for the chickens in, at the government level. Again, Bermuda's a lot smaller. They finally, they did a lot of research, they finally came up with five ways that they found to be acceptable ways to try to control the chicken population. One is trapping, two is shooting them, killing, as in shooting them, three is chemical control, four is netting them, sterilizing them, letting them back go. Trapping, shooting, chemical, four, those four. Obviously, the chemical that is a, hasn't even been approved here in the United States. Other animals get a hold of it, it'll kill other animals, so that's out. Shooting, they talk about using air rifles, BB guns, and then they talk about shotguns. We don't need to shoot a shotgun inside the city limits, for sure. Air guns, I would prefer not to do that, but you also have a lot of people, because if you do that, you're gonna kill the chicken. That's, that's the only reason for it. And so, I think we're gonna have a lot of people who are gonna have some issues with us shooting and killing the chickens. The netting sterilization, they find to be very, cost-prohibited, very expensive to sterilize a chicken and then let it go. The trapping, believe it or not, is probably the least effective way of dealing with the chicken population, and in my opinion, it's the only option we have if we're gonna try to do something. What they, and I'm gonna read the final paragraph, this is what they decided to do, and this is what they've been doing since 2011. Their goal is to catch 8,000 a year. They know that they will never get their population under control, but 8,000 a year, but they probably have at least 8,000 a year new chickens. In summary, the most efficient means to address most situations of feral chicken infestations is the combined use of alpha chloralose paste, which is the chemical, on bread and the air rifle to enable an efficient removal and retrieval rate. So, what they are doing is that chemical and killing them, shooting them and killing them, neither of which, in my opinion, is, is a viable options for us. And they have spent tens and tens of thousands of dollars on trying to figure out what to do with the chickens, and that's their solution. Do we have any, do you have any questions for me on that?
Thank you, sir. At this point in time, Troy is gonna come up and talk to us about our relationship with the trapper and our success rate to this point.
Good afternoon, councilmember, mayor, city manager, citizens of Bastrop. Okay, so January, February, met in November, January, February. At the end of January, we got a contract from the city attorney. We went through negotiations with Trapper Dan, I call him. I did not know at that time, you could not get insurance from GEICO for chickens, because they're classified as wild animals. So, that was an obstacle that I had to overcome, is find insurance for this liability insurance. Mr. Hecker finished all the contract paperwork and the insurance and the conflict of interest questionnaire, which is required. I had identified the initial trap locations, I've got the citizens' releases on those properties. And late February, early, early March, knowing that this was all happening, I started feeding them in preparation for this, to speed up the cycle. He was fabricating the traps at that time, went through several renditions of those. We put them in place on March the 14th. Of course, it's a new item in the area for the chickens, they're a little skeptical of it, so they're, they're actually triggered where they will not close up, and the chickens can go in and go out freely. We set up game cameras to monitor the behavior, and then once we released the traps so that they would capture them, you'll see this in a video later, they were able to get their way out. And I did not know that the, the hens could go through a little bitty opening about this big, straight up, and that's exactly what they would do, they'd get out, they're very slender. As of today, and we just caught three, but we delivered our first load of them to the zoo today, so we've caught 13, and the ratio's eight to five, we've gotten, we've captured five roosters. So, the zoo is, we delivered them today. Got my next one? So, what do we need to do? Future trapping? Obviously, this is gonna be a slow process, and we're gonna have to move our locations around. We're looking at the year-long contract with Mr. Hecker. We're going to trap every other month through January 2019. Right now, our schedule, proposed schedule is we're gonna trap, March is our beginning month, then we're gonna skip, we'll still feed, and then in May, we'll start trapping, July, September, and November, as shown here. We'll do two weeks each month, and of course, we can set traps out, just let them get accustomed to them. As we move around the city, we'll contact additional citizens and get their releases to do that. I'll feed, obviously, in preparation for that, because it does help, it actually starts attracting them to the property, and more of them show up. So, that's a good thing, but then they also say, you need to start trapping, because we got more chickens now. Collection of eggs, this was brought up. I find more goose eggs than I do chicken eggs, but you know, once I run across a nest, we will look at removing those eggs or relocating them. The zoo has an incubator, so they can take some of those eggs if they're fertile, and they're actually starting incubation, and we'll obtain a citizen release to obviously remove those eggs if we find them. This is just a general location, I just want everybody to be at ease. We're not anywhere near the chicken sanctuary, and these are general locations where complaints are in, but each of those bullseyes, we have three or four sites that we could actually trap in those areas, and that's where we're focusing our trapping at this time. Okay, talking about our chicken sanctuary, right now, it's really the-
You need to show the video.
Video, thank you for keeping us on track.
Yes, so-
Colin?
Colin's gonna come back. At this point in time, Colin has gone around and followed Trapper Dan and Troy, so that people have a perspective when we talk about trapping, what that looks like. Trapper Dan's gonna explain some of our challenges and all of that, so I think you'll find it informative.
I'm Dan Hecker, I own Texas Nuisance Wildlife Relocation. I've been doing trapping business for nearly 50 years now. Started out very young. The city of Bastrop contacted me and said if I could do something with their feral chickens, I'd advise them, I've never caught feral chickens before, but I'd give it my best shot, and it's, it's a tough endeavor, for certain, but we, we have five different traps that we have been working with. Three of them have hopes, two of them just probably aren't gonna quite work out for us, but the ones we have have taken a couple of weeks really to get them in line and get them working, and last Saturday is when I would say we probably had them in the best working order so far. We picked up six chickens that particular day. The traps I do not leave set at nighttime, just because if we did catch a chicken late at night, I wouldn't want a predator to get in there and kill it, nor would I want to catch a predator or someone's cat getting in there, so, so we don't leave them set at nighttime, but they're coming along good. Is it gonna be something that's gonna be feasible for the city of Bastrop? I'm really not certain yet, you know, spend a couple more weeks and see how things go, and I can advise them in the future. But there's, we'll just have to kinda wait and see, you know, and if this doesn't work out, we'll have to try a few other options, but researching this, and I've been researching it quite in depth for the last couple of weeks, trapping chickens is, is difficult. It can be done, and from what I've been watching on my trail cameras, I think probably I'm having more success than anything I've seen on the internet so far. I have trail cameras, so I know exactly how the birds are reacting to my traps, I know what they're doing, I know what they don't like, so just, just an adjustment process, trying to, trying to do the best I can to figure out what I need to do so I can earn my keep. And you have people thinking, because we have a [BLEEP] chicken trapper, the chicken should be disappearing. Well, it's, it's not that way. Again, it's that learning curve, we're trying to figure out, is this going to work? What do we need to do to make it work better? And it's, it's coming along. I'm still not, you know, totally convinced it's the, the thing that we need, you know, we may need several different tools involved to handle this problem, but you know, it is one tool, I think it will, it'll eventually work out, but I'm just not positive at this moment whether it will or not. Well, once I get one in a cage, I try to have my people lined up so I can take the animals to them right away. I try to make certain it's a, I hadn't been out at this place, but Troy's been out here, so he knew it was a good place to bring them to, but I wanna make certain that they're going to a place to where they're gonna have proper care, and, and everything that the city wants me to make certain is gonna be happening to them. So, you know, you have people that wanna eat them, you know, that obviously isn't part of our plan, so, and no chickens, we'll be eating, so.
Hey, everybody, I'm Michael Hicks, the director and founder of the Capital of Texas Zoo. We heard about some problems the chickens on Farm Street were causing in downtown Bastrop. And occasionally, we rescue animals, that's not our main thing, but we have about 50 rescue animals here. And back during the fires, we ended up housing about 80 animals for Bastrop Animal Control, exotic pets that people had abandoned, and most of those were rehomed. Some of our geese were surrendered by a gentleman in his 80s. So, Troy and I worked really well together during the Bastrop fire, and I noticed they were having this problem. Well, I've got 28 acres under high fence, and we have a number of free-range birds, people love them, and the birds are happy, so I reached out to Troy and say, hey, if you need a place, we're happy to take some of those chickens. And today, we took the first five. And I think it's gonna be very successful. They are supplementally fed, although there is a lot of natural food out here. There is the perimeter fence, which protects quite well from most predators, plenty of trees for them to perch in, so we think they'll do very well here, and that's what we're doing.
All right, let me get her again. Uh-oh. Uh-oh. Come back here, Angel.
Colin, may I need your help here? Angel's seven months old, she's been bottle-fed from day one of birth, her mother died, so she's very, very tame, and she chases the fowl out there in the deep woods.
So, mayor and council, Troy's gonna walk you through one of the challenges we have relative to clarity of our chicken sanctuary. So, this is an area that we need some policy direction on.
Okay, this is, the section number here, basically talks about the protected animals poltering file that are in our city parks, and then down below, I've highlighted it there, defines, the chicken sanctuary is basically a definition in our ordinance. And so, it just talks about the vicinity of Farm Street, from 95 to the railroad tracks, 1,500 feet. So, what we need to look at is clearer definition of the chicken sanctuary and the boundaries, and how far out north and south. So, suggested language may be limited to the back of the property line of each property facing Farm Street. I don't have a map of them here, but some of the properties go from Farm to Cedar, so their back property line would be all the way on Cedar Street, and the other ones would be a couple hundred feet, and then there's a lot behind them. We can bring back an ordinance amendment for city council for consideration, adopting a more clear definition. This is the direction we need to go. Once that clearer language is established, all file outside that area will not be protected and can be trapped.
Mayor and council, at this point in time, we'd like you to weigh in, and is this reasonable? I think it meets the intent of what the ordinance that was written was trying to do, and that is give them a Farm Street address, because they're chickens. So, if that's the case, then by going to the back of the property line of every property that faces Farm Street, not knowing beyond, you know, the words on the page, this would give us better clarity to manage that moving forward.
Councilmember Jones?
Ever since we had that meeting, I felt like I was misrepresented, because I know that you said that when we were moving forward, that everybody up here was, wanted to keep the sanctuary. I wanna make it really clear that I do not. I think this is a waste of money. I think that the city, I, I don't know how else to say it, I don't understand how we can set up something that's in a clear violation of what we force our citizens to do. You know, we want people to have pens, we want them to take care of these animals, and I think that's, you know, if you like chickens, put them in your backyard. And I think about all the things that we need money to do, and all of the areas that we need to be focusing on, and, and I personally think this is ridiculous, and I am not in favor in any way, shape, or form of maintaining that sanctuary.
Counsel, anyone else have a comment? Mayor Protem Schiff?
I agree with Councilwoman Jones. It's a woman, Joan.
Councilmember Anderson?
Are we going to define the sanctuary in our discussions tonight? What-
I am going to give you an alternative, but between here and that alternative, we're gonna have the conversation that Councilmember Jones just appropriately raised, and that is whatever you do is going to take money. And if you have a free-range feral chicken in town, you heard the chief say that their gestation period's 20 days, and we are going to- gestation period's 20 days, and we are going to consistently be fighting this issue. So we are offering a solution, because what we heard from the community was this adds to the small-town charm that Bastrop has known, and we certainly appreciate that. We've come up with a, a possible solution, so maybe rather than answering this now, we'll park that, we'll complete the presentation, we'll have a conversation about the alternative, and then let y'all either decide on that or amend this language so we have clarity. Is that fair?
Yeah, Councilmember Renus, did you want to-
That, that, that solves my quandary.
Yeah, I, I, I think I'm going to like the alternative better. I, just right off the bat, I think it's problematic to say the property line, particularly if a property line goes all the way to another street, and I, I can't imagine us then trying to somehow absolutely define a sanctuary, and poor Troy out there going, "Am I 423 feet away?" Or, so, we need something that's reasonable to move forward, so I, rather than beat this, can, we're all in agreement, let's keep going.
We'll, we'll keep going, and we'll come back, so, that's awesome. So the chief's going to walk us through the definition of cruelty to animals, and I think this will help understand why some of the things that the government of Bermuda was proposing would not fly in the state of Texas.
Thank you. On cruelty to animals, chickens are considered livestock. The way you read the law, anytime there's a buzzword in there, there's going to be a definition. So I want to start out by the definition of livestock. What is livestock? The definition of livestock is an animal that is a cattle, sheep, swine, goats, or poe tree commonly raised for human consumption. So there's, because we have two laws, we have cruelty to livestock and cruelty to non-livestock. So chickens are livestock. So, the law is 4209, cruelty to livestock animals. A person commits an offense if the person intentionally or knowingly tortures a livestock animal. So now go to the definition of torture. Torture is, includes any act that causes unjustifiable pain or suffering. So basically, if somebody, I know one of the suggestions was is to try to get groups of people together, Boy Scouts or whoever, and try to catch the chickens. If they fall on the chicken, that's not, that's not going to be the, they're not going to be in violation of law because that was an accident. However, if, if we do something that we know may cause pain to that chicken, that's a violation of state law, and it's a state just felony, so it is a felony. And we have, I've talked several times with the district attorney, and he says if the elements of the offense are there, if everything's there, he will accept that case. So it would be a felony if we in any way harm the chicken, if we intentionally or knowingly. I don't think any of us would intentionally, but knowingly, sometimes it could catch us, so I don't even want to go down that road, to be honest with you on that. Does anybody have any questions on what the state law is?
Thank you, Chief.
Councilmember Jones?
So to be clear, the DA is going to prosecute anyone that knowingly tortures-
No, what he said, he was, "Accept the case."
He would accept the case.
Okay.
It would ultimately, it would be our decision whether we filed the case, we will file the case, and then he will accept the case.
Um, Mayor and Council, in the last legislative session, apparently there are some homeowner associations or property owner associations that are prohibiting caged fowl. And there is a trend now for folks that like to eat a paleo diet from the earth, that they do urban chicken coops. And there's a whole section of Pinterest that have some very creative models that you do that, and we're going to show you a picture we're going to suggest here. But Troy and I had a conversation about this legislature, and as you can see, it died in the chamber, but I thought it would be helpful for Troy to walk through this, because I think that this, I don't often say this about legislation, but I think this is a reasonable piece of legislation that can be kind of a guide for how we might solve some of the problems that we're having, so I wanted Troy to walk this through for you.
Okay. So this is the proposed legislation. It basically says it prohibits the cities from not allowing caged fowl. A municipality may impose reasonable requirements on the caged fowl, but it cannot prohibit the keeping of six or fewer. So if your distance does that, you're in effect prohibiting keeping six chickens or fewer on your setbacks. But you can prohibit breeding, you can prohibit roosters, I think that would accomplish that if you do that. Set the minimum distance coop requirements, location on residential structures. And the bill died in chambers, just to know, that's not bill that you see there on the right, so. Here's our city ordinance. Right now, it's within 50 feet of any private residence or dwelling of a place of another person other than the owner of the animals. So our ordinance right here in itself is 50 feet, and I've got a diagram here of a lot size that is a single-family, seven, which is 7,000 square feet. If it's a 40, if, this is kind of the exception, but if it's a 40-foot lot, the blue arrow indicates that between that residence and that chicken coop, it has to be 50 feet. So the house on the right, Residence B, would not be able to comply with our ordinance and have chickens, so we would in effect be prohibiting that. So one of the things we can look at is the red arrows is setting, doing the setbacks from the property line and still allowing that, so. Mayor, um, thank you. The other one, the other exception here we have, and there is, is within 100 feet of a building or a structure that's open to the public. And our current ordinance does speak to noises, odors, and past inoffensive conditions.
So rather than get into all of the area cities and what they do and all of that, this slide, I think, begins to speak to the challenge that we currently have. We have some small lots downtown, we have some large lots downtown. And so what, for those that would like to keep caged fowl, if we worked it from the property line back to their house, and they wanted to have that coop up close to their house, and it didn't pose a direct problem to the residents, then that solves our problem. The challenge is, is if with 50 feet, you've got to have this huge lot, but if up against the house, we can get enough of a barrier that it's not up against the fence line, it's not being intrusive to the residents, that might be an option that we can, we can overcome a challenge. And so to give you background noise on why Troy and I are pretty concerned about this, we have a property owner downtown that is in violation of our ordinance. The chickens are pretty important to her, and currently, she is downtown where all of the free-range chickens are roaming. So in order to address a complaint that we got, Troy went over and appropriately engaged with her, because our ordinance says all of the right things, so he went over with the measuring tape in the ordinance and measured all of the right things, and clearly the property owner was concerned because it was going to significantly limit her chickens, because there was, if I remember correctly, just a little bitty spot where she was in compliance with our ordinance. But out front, there was 25 chickens or so when, when Troy was there trying to enforce this. So it doesn't take him long to show up at City Hall and tell me how uncomfortable the conversation was, and that she would be calling me, and rightly so. So when I had a conversation with her, I just told her, "Ma'am, we're going to put this on hold until we can appropriately deal with you so that we're not talking out of both sides of our mouth." So we need to fix the ordinance relative to keeping chickens on our lot. So I appreciate that we're off in the weeds tonight, but it is what it is. I need a little direction on how y'all would be willing to embrace a change, because for everybody that's glad there's a 50-foot setback because they don't have to deal with chickens and the noise, is now going to be uncomfortable with the fact that we've shrunk the setbacks, and now they're going to have to deal with chickens. So I'm trading one problem for another, admittedly, but I need some help with some policy here.
Councilmembers, not all at once. Does anybody have any comments? Mayor Pro Tim Schiff?
Yeah, I'm not sure that I see the connection between the coop chickens and the free-range chickens, the feral chickens that are out there. What's the-
The, the connection is, is exactly what Councilmember Jones is expressing a challenge with, and that is, we have a sanctuary that allows free-range chickens to move freely. We do nothing to cull the herd, and they don't read, so they just roam all over town, and we have not dedicated the appropriate resources or management to manage this ordinance, in my opinion, responsibly, so we're not being a good neighbor. So we go over there, and we're giving a property owner who's got a caged chicken-
Yeah, I, I understand that, I understa, I understand-
Well, she's got an issue with her neighbor that's read our ordinance, and she just wants our ordinance to be enforced. So I'm in a no-win situation. I'm not going to make the, the property owner that wants our ordinance enforced happy, I'm not going to make the property owner who's got caged chickens happy, and we all lose because there's free-range chickens in the front yard.
Right, and I think you deal with one issue first, and then you, if you can fix the first issue, then you can deal with the second issue. I'm a little confused here that we're trying to tackle two, that I think two totally different issues in one conversation here.
Part of the issue is, is you've got folks that really do like chickens and want chickens, and if we're going to get out of the sanctuary business, you've got to give those people that want chickens an ability to do it legally.
And I think that's fine, but I, I'd like to get back to, what are we going to do with the feral chickens?
Okay, this is part of, well, okay.
To me, this is not a feral chicken issue. If we say, "Yeah, you can have it, they're cooped," they're not the problem that we're having.
No, but it helps, it, it might give peace to those that are feeding the feral chickens and making it a complicated process for us to fix, a way to have chickens on their property and feed them if they want to. So while it does not seem relevant to the roosters, it's, this is a holistic approach to a huge problem for which there is no simple answer.
So what the city manager, I believe, is trying to say is, she'd really like to narrow the number of times we're talking about chickens in city council, and-
Bless you, Mayor, thank you.
If we talk about the feral chickens and we delay the coops, then that just means now we're going to have to talk about the coops. She'd like to just have the chicken conversation, get some direction from us, and then we can begin to take the chicken calls, because we know they're coming.
Okay, so let me ask you a question. Does it have to be 50 feet?
No, actually, something smaller would be easier for people that want to have them. In the part of downtown that I live in, neither me nor my neighbor who may want urban chickens can have chickens. So what this does is, is it takes all of the acuteness and the mystique out of, "I'd like chickens, I can't have chickens, so I'm glad they're walking up and down the street" kind of chickens, and putting it to a place that people that really are raising them for dietary reasons or whatever have an option to do it. And so without belaboring the point tonight on the setbacks and all of that, I'm, we just, at some point in time, we're going to have to make some tough choices if we're going to really address this problem. So I need some direction, is this something y'all are willing to have, a future conversation? Are y'all all in agreement with Councilmember Schiff, and we just park this, and then we're just not going to be in the chicken management business?
No, I think, I think this is, we need to, to handle it. And, you know, I can remember several years ago when they forced everybody to not have pigs in the city, and that was a huge problem. And, you know, but we got through it, and, you know, and here we are. So would you go to the slide that shows what the other cities do? Because I think we really can make this not as complicated. And I'll just step out there. I don't think you should be able to have a rooster. It doesn't matter where it is on the lot, it's a, it's a problem. So, and if you go to the Senate bill, they prohibited roosters, so my policy direction is no roosters. I, when I look up and down, and you, I, I think 100 for the lot size, I think that's kind of not reasonable. I'm thinking five or six. I don't care if some, if everybody likes five, that's fine, if they like, I don't care. But part of that is a small coop, if it, if with the distance setbacks, if it's required to be closer to your home, it makes the problem be with the people who are able to handle that, and it keeps it from being on a, a back fence that makes it perhaps someone else's problem. So you did show that it was a 40-foot non-conforming lot, and I know we have some of those, but we also have many, many lots in, inside downtown that are not 40-foot wide. So maybe we end up saying that the, maybe the way to have it fair to everyone is that the coop has to be within so many feet from the structure, and then it doesn't matter what size lot you're on. It, it's got to, if you want chickens, and you live in the city, it's got to be close enough to your house that if it's annoying anyone, it's annoying you, and hopefully not your neighbors. That would be my suggestion, rather than trying to come up with a different setback for every size lot. So I think the number, yes or no on the roosters, and some sort of direction on, on distance. Mayor Pro Tim Schiff, do you have, what do you think about that?
Yeah, I, I think that's reasonable, but I would like you to clarify. I think the, 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 the stream of your thoughts, to me, said that we're going to have a rule that says, "If you're going to have chickens, they're going to be cooped," and that's what I'd like this council to say, because if we don't do that, we're going to be fighting this issue forever, we're going to look just like Bermuda. You can't, when they, when they reproduce as fast as they do, we'll just never get ahead of the game. So the, the only way we're going to be able to, to turn anyone loose to deal with it is to say, "Okay, if it's loose, it's in violation of city code, trap it, move it out," and then-
I, I think we're finding ourselves in violent agreement. If we can move on and look at the coop, we may be able to circle back around and make everybody happy.
Okay.
So can we, can we keep going? I really think we can get there.
You can get me some head nods at that end of the question.
Oh, yeah. Councilmember Peterson, Councilmember Nelson, so are you in, no roosters? Anybody got a favorite number, five, six?
I think it should be five or less.
Five or less? Councilmember Nelson?
The number's fairly arbitrary, I mean-
Absolutely.
And so it's, it's, you know, five, six, as long, as long as we enforce it. I'm, I'm in agreement that if, that if somebody wants a chicken, it needs to be confined in some way, shape, or form, so as not to be roaming. I have, may I ask a couple of questions of-
Please. Yeah, get your on your mic.
Relative to the increase in population, is that all attributed to natural occurrence, or is there some dumping going on that you're aware of?
We've been told there is some dumping.
That, I think there is, I, I have a hunch there is some dumping. I did find one instance where some of them showed up, and I had noticed a cage, and I knocked on the door and said, "Hey, we're trapping over here, can I come trap over here, and here's a release?" And they're like, "Oh, no, those are my dad's." And then I said, "Okay, you have to contain them." But the ordinance does state that you have to have them in the coop. What you have is though some people enjoy having them around, and they're, you can't really say that they own them, you can, all day long, you can say, "Well, if you feed them, you're the owner," but really, how do I prove that that chicken is the one you're feeding, and you own that chicken, and it's running loose? And when I've had those situations, I just tell them, "Look, I'm going to pick them up," and then they go back in the coop. They, they let them out, and then they run around, and then you're like, "I don't have an inventory of which chickens you have in your coop," so they're mixed in with all the feral chickens, and I don't know whose is whose.
Councilmember Nelson, I don't know, remember who I talked to and who told me this, and I haven't been able to prove that it's true or not, but I think chickens live 14 or so years if they get a natural life, and somewhere after about eight, I think they quit laying. So when they quit serving their purpose, I think we have inherited some of those chickens. And I don't, again, I can't quote you the source, but I've been told that at least once. I don't know if it's true, but that could account for why some of the chickens get dumped.
My reason for asking is, if we're going to rewrite the ordinance to deal with this issue, that we, perhaps we should put some sort of caveat in there to address that issue, and perhaps some penalties on that. Second question is noises, odors, pests, and offensive conditions. Is this clearly defined, or is it just somewhat a subjective opinion?
It, it's very subjective, and I, very often I get people say, "Well, the fly problem is from those chickens." But if you've ever seen flies in the coop, they don't last very long. The chickens go after them. And I think several things can address that, because what may be offensive- And I think several things can address that, because what may be offensive to one person is not offensive, you know, and you don't live there, and I don't walk up and smell it unless, you know, the conditions are right. The number obviously will reduce that anyway, if you have limited number. And then the noise, the roosters, that's, you know, the hen's going to cluck a little bit, it's a very soft cluck, and they're happy, they laid an egg, and then they stop. But the roosters crow all the time. So all of those factors, I think inherently will fix some of the complaint about the nuisance. And then there's some, you know, it's just a nuisance, because it's a chicken, and I don't like it next to me. And the whole thing with the setback, you know, and I'll just speak to that, and I don't want to belabor this too much, but people really have a hard time, why is my property being used as a setback? They're the problem with their chickens. And that, putting it on the property line or next to the house does put it there. Because people will go, the coop is all the way at the back of the lot, and then it's closer to the people's house next door, and they're upset because they have this big yard, and it's next to them and not closer to their house. So, you know, any change is going to make some people unhappy. But we, I think we need to look at it going forward. We need to look at it in case we, you know, mandate that you can't restrict less than six, and be smart about it, and let's just visit this once, move it on. But currently, you're required to coop them. Currently, there's a nuisance, it's very subjective, you know, but they, they just call it a nuisance, and it's just a generic term, and it's hard to...
We, we will work on all of that, because as the mayor said, we really would like to talk about something other than chickens. So let's talk about maintaining a responsible chicken sanctuary in the future. The existing chicken sanctuary is simply a designated area with general boundaries as defined by the ordinance. The city never established any provisions to maintain a chicken sanctuary, and never defined what responsible looks like. So we met shortly after the November public hearing and walked through all of the notes, and I got the assignment to figure out what responsible chicken sanctuaries look like. So our city attorney's lovely fiancee did some wonderful research for me and sent me some names of people to call. So I called this one person that came highly recommended, and the minute I said to her, my name is Linda Umble, I'm city manager of Bassdrop, I didn't get Bassdrop out good before she said to me in a very stern tone, I am not coming to Bassdrop and helping you with that chicken sanctuary problem. Oh, no, you're not dragging me in the middle of that, she says. I'm like, well, gee, thanks. So I said, well, I said, here's the dilemma that I have, and that is, I don't know what responsible looks like, but I do know that if we do nothing, things aren't going to change. And so she walks through all of the challenges, because they're really not considered an endangered species, you know, they're, they're a farm animal, and we've done something with them that they really were not intended to do. And so after doing some homework, I really have come to this conclusion. And that is, if we're going to keep a chicken sanctuary, then we have to establish an ongoing maintenance plan with an allocated budget, period. If not, then we are spending important resources on a Band-Aid approach. And I'm going to just call it what it is, we're spending stupid money. Because we'll no more get this problem solved, but if they have a gestation period of 22 days, it won't be long before we've got a bigger problem than we had. I mean, you're never going to get ahead of this particular problem. And so recognizing that the chicken sanctuary is a part of our small-town charm, is there a desire to allocate annual budgetary resources to maintain a chicken sanctuary where there are feral roosters and chickens? And I said we'd spend $8,000 this year, but really it's going to be closer to 10. And that's not counting the staff time of the code enforcement officer, animal control officer, Troy Walters. It doesn't count the hours that the assistant police chief, Alt Gil, has spent. It does not count the hours that Chief Adcock spends. And because this is now become a political issue, I get to spend time on it. So I haven't calculated all of the hours that we're spending on this chicken sanctuary. But the truth of the matter is, this is going to be a multi-year problem to solve, period. You've heard from Trapper Dan that it's going to take time, we're not going to get every chicken at one time. And so the next question is, do we want to consider an alternative that preserves the chicken sanctuary, that respects the role of it in our small-town charm? And Troy has come up with what I think is a pretty cute idea. We know the silos are important in our history, we've got them across the street at the convention center, we have them across the street at the Lost Pines Art Center. So we could design something like this that is intended to be a tourist destination, hang the signs out that it's a chicken sanctuary. We, if there is an interest in moving to this, we can certainly have it priced, we can work with the school and get the Future Farmers of America to maybe make this a farm project that they could help maintain. We can organize citizen partners, because this is a place where Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts could partner with the city and help, should you choose, to go that route and continue a chicken sanctuary. Our suggestion would be is that we put it on city property somewhere in the general area, and that way it could be, continue to be marketed at, as a tourist destination somewhere in Farm Street. So we can meet the intent of what the chicken sanctuary was probably written for, but we can translate, transition it from when we were more rural to now of a more urban-style population. Something like this, you can see people walking around it and engaging with it if that was your preference. So if we want to transition to that type of enclosed sanctuary, we would establish estimated cost of construction on a permanent sanctuary, and depending on its cost, fund one next year. Again, we'd identify the community partners to help us provide that responsible care that personally today we're not doing. We'd also have to establish an annual funding in future budgets to continue to remove feral roosters and chickens until the population has ultimately been removed or died out. And that's going to be a multi-year funding commitment. We've got, you know, 100-plus chickens down there, or more. And at every 22 days they're breeding, you know, unless we're, you know, gathering more than, than are being born, we're never going to get ahead of this. So there's plenty of news from Austin, Waco, and Dallas, if misery loves company, we're not the only folks out there dealing with this. But this is what our research has determined, this is where we're at. So I need some feedback on whether or not you want to keep a chicken sanctuary, do you want to transition to something that's more permanent, or do you want to eradicate it in its entirety? Do we recognize this is an ongoing budget cost, whether we like it or not? And then how do we want to amend the ordinance to address what constitutes the chicken sanctuary? And at this time, Mayor, that's lots of policy that's out of our bailiwick, and I'm looking for instructions.
Mayor Protem Schiff, do you want to comment?
Well, I'll go back to Councilwoman Jones' comments, and that is that I don't think it's worth continuing to invest in this chicken sanctuary, and I'd like to see it gone. But I would, I would qualify that and say, if this is considered a tourist issue, that the sanctuary should continue to exist in some form or other, maybe it's a hot fund issue. It's a touristy draw to Bassdrop, so let hot funds pay for any maintenance if a sanctuary was to go forward.
I, I would really hate to have to go to Austin and be called upon to defend hot funding. I'd rather just deal with it straight up, make it a fundraising deal, and if the chicken sanctuary is important to this community, we'll find the money. If it's not, that's the answer.
Councilmember Ennis?
I think we've heard from our, quite a few of our citizens that the sanctuary is important to them. And I would support a plan where we have the, have the enclosed chicken sanctuary, we allow our citizens to have, have coops with redefined boundaries, and any chicken that's outside of those two, two types of structures needs to be rounded up.
But I wonder if a chicken sanctuary structure has the flavor of what people like about the chickens wandering around the city? I mean, is it, are we, are you really getting the effect that, that people see in the chickens that I guess I don't? In a, in a enclosed environment as, as opposed to the, the free-wandering chickens?
If, if you're looking for a comment from staff, we are just proposing solutions to a problem we don't see having an answer.
So I, I guess the first thing that we need to clarify is, getting us back to the chicken sanctuary as it's currently defined is not well currently defined. Is anyone on council wanting to discuss changing the boundaries so that there are still free-roaming feral chickens in some sort of a boundary? Is anyone wanting to support that?
I do not.
I, I'm asking if anyone does want to support that. I'm, I'm seeing no. So I think that the city manager has told us that this problem's not going to be solved immediately. So we, like it or not, we are already signed up to an amount of money that we're going to have to spend over a multi-year period to get the free-roaming chickens gone. So if we, if, well, the policy is that we don't want free-roaming chickens, then the next policy I hear, that I think I've got consensus on, is five or less, no roosters, and we'll let staff make a recommendation to us. But I, even though it was my idea, I do think an idea from the structure, from a structure that someone owns is a good way to not have to deal with how far away it is from a lot. Is, can council nod yes that they are okay with that for, if you really want chickens, they're in a coop, and that means they're not feral? Or do you not want any chicken coops allowed in town at all? Councilmember Jones?
No, I think that, I think it's fine to have that, you know, to allow that. I do want to just make one comment that I thought was, you know, based on your presentation that I was, thought was disturbing, and that is to go around collecting eggs and incubating them. I do not understand that. That does not make any sense to me.
You have to collect the eggs, because if you don't, they'll hatch, and they'll continue...
I understand, but to incubate them, I don't, it's cruel to break an egg.
We are trying to be respectful of those that have a passion for chickens, and we have a gentleman that will take it, and if they are, then, then we have responsibly managed this issue as respectful as we can for both sides of those that are passionate about the issue.
But, see, manager, we're not paying to get them incubated, we're just surrendering the eggs.
We're just giving them to somebody.
We're surrendering the eggs, and to your point, Councilmember Jones, I guess they can be scrambled, fried, or incubated, but they are no longer the possession of the city of Bassdrop. So if, if we are saying we, I don't see council support to have continued free-roaming chickens, I do see council support for a way for folks to have chickens at, near their property that they are responsible for, then the last item to discuss, if you'll go to your... go to that one. Then what, the last, the final policy is, does this council want to give direction to staff to pursue some type of an urban co-op, urban coop kind of thing? Do you not want to pursue that at all? Or is it something you'd like an opportunity to talk to your constituents and see if it's, if it can be funded not from city taxpayer dollars? Those are your choices. I want a coop, I don't want a coop, I want some time. Councilmember Ennis?
I want a coop, and I want to reiterate something we have not mentioned tonight, and that is that there is, there's been a lot of discussion about the chickens on Farm Street, that they are historic chickens, that they've been there for years. I can't prove that, but it's important to a lot of people, and it's those chickens that would be in this particular sanctuary.
You are now signing up to identify which of those chickens are historic and will be placed in a coop.
Or someone will.
It will not be me.
It's not me.
Councilmember Jones, do you want a coop? Don't want it, yes, no, or want to wait?
Yes, but I want to say one more thing, and that is, I don't think it's the city's responsibility, this, I can't get over this, to go collect eggs and hand, if somebody wants to come into town and identify nests and pick up those eggs and go incubate them or whatever, I don't think that's the city's responsibility, and I don't want to spend our time and effort on that.
So you'd be happy with us just collecting and disposing of the eggs?
Yes, absolutely, 100%. And I'm not necessarily interested in building a coop. We've got our hands full, we've got a lot going on. If a group wants to come in and raise money and do that, just like the art center across the street, if there's a group that wants to spearhead that, let them do it. I don't think it's the city's responsibility to get involved in building a coop.
I say, so Councilmember Ennis, I hear you saying you would like a coop, and you want the chance to pursue maybe a way to fund it. Councilmember Jones, you're not opposed to the coop, you do not want taxpayer dollars going towards the urban coop. Is that correct? Mayor Protem Schiff? Well, you can't agree, there were two different things. Which one are you...
I agree with the last sentence, which is, let's not fund it.
You're not opposed to the coop, you do not want to spend city tax dollars?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
I think we need to explore the cost. I'm not particularly fond of the city funding a sanctuary. But if we can find some collaborative partners in there, perhaps fund that with, with our blessing, I would, I would be keen on that, certainly.
So you're not opposed to the coop, but you don't want it to be a major line item in the budget moving forward?
You have succinctly crystallized my thought. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes, I totally agree with Councilwoman Schiff, Councilwoman Jones, because I can't really see the city get into the zoo business.
Okay. So council, we are giving policy direction that when the city manager works with staff and comes back, we are saying that there will be a point in time after the trapping is done, that there will not be free-roaming feral chickens in the city limits of Bassdrop, Texas. Okay. City manager, what else do you need from us?
I need more clarification on the policy I just got. So let's talk about it. I got a no to a chicken sanctuary. So if I bring you an ordinance next council meeting that removes the chicken sanctuary designation, we have agreement that that is what this council wants, correct?
I, I think that they are saying they want to remove that, redefine the sanctuary as the urban coop, as opposed to the others. I don't, Councilmember Ennis, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth. Are you prepared to say no more free, we'll just mix the ordinance that we have?
I'm prepared to say no more free, for sure.
Okay, okay.
The next question on the coop, I appreciate we want somebody else to fund it, but do I need to put it in the city's work plan, that we're going to work to raise money in private funding? Or y'all telling me it's fine if we get a coop, if somebody owns the project, owns the funding, we can work with them to find a place to put the coop? I'd like some direction on that, please.
That's what I think. If somebody wants to come forward with a chicken group and fund that and design it, I think we could be convinced to possibly give them a location, but other than that, I'm not interested.
Councilmember Ennis?
Basically, that's a win-win for me. I, I might partner with them on the, on some of the cost of building the coop, but I think it's a win-win to, to get an outside group to take care of this.
Okay, so what I hear this side of the dais saying is that city might provide property, a location for a coop such as this, but we really are looking for someone else to pick up the ball and be in charge of it, and so we're not spending staff time with designing and budgeting, et cetera. Mayor Protem Schiff?
That's fine with me.
Councilmember Nelson?
I could go.
Councilmember Peterson?
Bobblehead.
Okay, the last thing is the multi-year budget. I think if you remember the comments that Trapper Dan indicated, is that he's been doing trapping for 50-plus years. Trapping chickens is a complicated business, does not necessarily have a high success rate, even though he thinks he's been more successful than most. This is going to be a project that I believe will be a multi-year funding issue in order to finally get the chickens removed from the community. So just to be clear, we have a year-long agreement with Trapper Dan, and we're going to do an every-other-month proposal through February of 2019. I plan to put money in next year's budget to perpetuate the cycle of aggressively managing that... that, whatever it is, and he's, he's mentioned that it will be a multi-tool in our toolbox, um, that, um, we at least get through next fiscal year, and as we build what will be fiscal year 20's budget in the spring of next year, we can evaluate our progress and see if there needs to be a third year of funding. But I, I want us to be clear that in this year's budget and in this year's budget memo, I will talk about funding, um, the removal of feral chickens until such time the population has been removed.
I, I would, I'd suggest that you call it trapping feral chickens, so we're very clear about what it is, and the only other thing that I would like to add is, um, by the time we're voting on something for an October 1st, he will have had a few rounds, and if by August he's thinking we should be doing this every month, or there should be a revision, we should take advantage of anything we learned between now and then.
Yes, ma'am, and the reason that I'm calling it removal and not trapping is trapping may not be his, um, tool of choice.
I got you, I got you, okay.
Okay, I just want to say one thing, like, for example, I don't know if this is the time when we can authorize him to use alternative means, for example, chemicals that make them sleepy so that he can catch them. Nothing that would hurt them, but just maybe make them sleepy so he can collect them. But, you know, I'm just saying if there's alternative humane ways that he can capture them, if this is the time for us to bring that up, I think that might be.
I would prefer you not get into the operational means with which the chickens, um, get collected. What I will tell you, um, and what the chief was trying to politely tell you is the law limits what we can legally do, so we will exercise every means appropriate to legally remove the chickens without violating the law.
Let's accept that.
Um, just because, um, some folks have expressed interest in the weather, um, the National Weather Service has issued a flash flood watch through 10 o'clock. Mayor, that concludes my comments.
All right, city manager, do you have all the direction you need? Council, are we fine with the chickens? We are moving on to item 5C, review and discuss draft ethics ordinance. If you're following along at home on the packet, we're on page 37.
Mayor, council. You have in your packet draft A of a different version of our ethics ordinance. I'll remind council that prior to me becoming city attorney, you had worked with your previous city attorney on the existing code, trying to identify some, some issues regarding both the procedural aspects of the code and some of the substantive matters. Uh, I know you had some work sessions on that, you identified some issues. Uh, I was special outside counsel at the time, I chimed in identifying some issues. Ultimately, those, that work product never got adopted. And so when I came on board, I was asked to take a fresh look at it holistically, and I've gone through and identified some fixes to your code of ethics that I would recommend, both procedurally and substantively, to make it a more workable document. But I also looked at it, uh, from a different point of view of just considering you adopting a completely different code of ethics. And I'm fine either way, but my recommendation is to adopt a new code of ethics. I think your existing one has taken you, uh, a great distance, and you've gotten some mileage out of it, but this is a topic that I work on extensively, and I think there's a different way to go, and that's what I'd like you to consider. You've got draft A in your packet, you may have read it, you may not have, that's okay if you didn't get through the entire thing right now, but I give you kind of the fundamental basics so you can see where we're headed. Um, the Lariot acronym that I'm using is how I describe the methodology that I've created to do municipal ethics ordinances, and I think these are the key components of what I would consider to be a good ethics ordinance. It's got to have a role for leadership, which primarily means the mayor and city council. It's got to have a role for city management to implement the policies that you stated. It's got to have a regulatory component, which means we have rules, mandates, prohibitions, and then we have a process for actually enforcing those. It has an instruction component, because I believe the literature regarding ethics and governmental ethics, organizational ethics, highlights that training and conversations about ethics are the number one way to actually improve the integrity of an organization. It's not more rules, it's not stiffer penalties, it's not more harshen in enforcement, it's talking about the dilemmas that we all face every day in doing the public's business, and that's why instruction is so important. That being said, there's got to be an accountability aspect to it. What are the sanctions or the penalties for those who violate the ordinance? And ultimately transparency. Uh, my recommendations you'll see in the ordinance calls for strict compliance with the Open Meetings Act and the Open Records Act, because it's hard to say we're going to adopt a code of ethics so that the public will trust us, and then we're going to shield all of the workings of that ordinance away from the public. So using Lariot as a background, uh, we, I went through and evaluated your ordinance. The current code, there's several things about the mechanics, um, that I want to point out, and it's, it's no disrespect to those who drafted the original code or have been enforcing it all this time, but when you look at the way it's designed, where the different words and sections fall in the ordinance, it's not intuitive. If someone wants to understand what they can and can't do, must and must not do, how do you process a complaint? You're flipping back and forth and back and forth, and if you've been through this, you've seen how cumbersome the document is. When you look at definitions, I'm kind of surprised, there's a lot of terms that are used in the document that are not defined in our code of ethics, and they're not defined anywhere else in the code of ordinances. So then you're by default relying on, you know, just common definitions that people use, and that's sometimes unworkable when you've been accused of an infraction and you're trying to defend yourself, or just trying to figure out what the rules will allow you to do. Uh, the language is gender-specific throughout the document, and everything I draft these days is gender-neutral, there's no need to be masculine in all the language. When it comes to the process, there are gaps. It is not clear when someone files an ethics complaint, how is that complaint handled from the beginning to the end? When someone is accused of an ethics infraction, when do they get to chime in? What are their rights? How do they respond? A lot of those answers are missing from your current document. Uh, there's nothing in your current document, your current code of ethics, that allows for dismissal of a complaint if it doesn't meet certain basic requirements. And I think that's important because when you do municipal ethics, you're really balancing a few things. You want rules and regulations that will inspire and require people to conduct themselves better when they're conducting public business. But the other side of the equation is that you want to protect those that are accused from defamation, slander, and give them due process. You have to have both. And while I am an advocate of municipal ethics, I am also against ethics being used as a political weapon, and we see that happen more and more these days. Well, our code here in Bastrop should allow us to deal with those sorts of things, and your current code doesn't have the safety valves that I would recommend. And then finally, when it comes to conflicts of interest, it's fairly loosely defined. Uh, it's difficult to tell based on your definitions when someone has a conflict and when they don't. So with those being some of the issues I've identified with your current code, I went on to prepare this new code for you. Uh, if you look at it, you saw that there are a lot more definitions, and they're a little bit more specific. Uh, when it comes to what the code applies to, which officials it applies to, it's very specific about that as well. The process is very finite. When a complaint happens, a complaint gets filed, the clock starts ticking. How many days before someone has to acknowledge the complaint? How many days before the person who's accused gets a copy of the complaint? Does someone pre-screen it to see, does it include the ingredients that our ordinance requires, yes or no? Uh, if it does include those ingredients, there's a process to review it to see if it were assumed to be true, does it add up to anything that's covered by our code? Uh, it, a lot of specificity is added to this new version regarding the roles of the different people involved. Uh, for example, when it comes to just managing the paperwork, I went ahead and chose the city secretary for that. Some other cities that have internal auditors or compliance auditors may have somebody else assign that role, but municipal clerks are skilled at receiving paper and, and punching, uh, the clock regarding deadlines. It also specifies about the role of the city attorney. Under this new version, it makes it clear that the city attorney is the legal advisor to the board of ethics. And there's, just because one individual council member is accused of an ethics infraction does not necessarily create a conflict of interest for me under the rules that govern lawyers, nor would it under this. But then this new code also specifically calls out special counsel and says that special counsel can be hired by the city attorney on the city's behalf to represent the board of ethics, either when the city attorney deems it necessary, I suspect that I have a conflict coming up and I don't want that on me, or when the city council requests that there be special counsel brought on board for a particular case. You don't have that mechanism in, in your current ordinance. Um, you don't, your current ordinance will talk about things such as ex parte communications, Latin for once, once a complaint is filed, the parties to that complaint should not be speaking behind the scenes to the board of ethics. Well, your current ordinance does that, but doesn't tell the complainant or the accused who they can talk to. Who should letters be filed with? Who should, um, defenses be filed with if you're going to challenge something like that? And so I provide that mechanism in here for who the parties can speak to in regards to an ethics complaint. Uh, I recommend we expand our board of ethics, which currently we, we call Ethics Commission, but I, um, am calling it Board of Ethics just to distinguish between those two. Expand it to a five-member board versus a three. Um, and one reason I want to do that is because I'm recommending that we create a, a process for advisory opinions and for pre-screening. The concept would be that if you have a board of ethics of five members, then on a rotating basis, two of them will serve as an ad hoc subcommittee, which I've called a panel. And that panel can do a couple of things. One is, they can issue it an advisory opinion. So if you're not sure of a duty to disclose a financial relationship, you're not sure whether you can advocate on somebody else's behalf in front of P and Z, or you're not sure if you can vote on a matter, you could ask the board of ethics for an advisory opinion upfront, and this two-person panel will look at your request, look at the facts you're presenting, look at the code, and give you a written ruling. You can then rely on that, and if anybody ever accuses you of an ethics complaint, you can raise that as an affirmative defense. That group, that panel would be a rotating, uh, body, a subcommittee of the group. The other thing a panel would do is they would pre-screen complaints, not to decide if someone's innocent or guilty, but to look at a complaint and say, okay, if I assume all of the facts that are alleged here are true, would it add up to a violation of our code? If yes, then the complaint goes forward in the process, and there's a public hearing before the board of ethics, each side gets to represent themselves or have a lawyer represent them, evidence is put on, the board of ethics makes a decision. If the answer is no, even if all these facts are assumed to be true, it still doesn't add up to anything under our code, then the board of ethics has no jurisdiction to even hear it. Why go through the expense or the hassle, the time, the PR of a public hearing if the allegations don't even add up to an offense? And so the panel provides an important role of advisory opinions and a safety valve for those frivolous offenses or offenses that may say, gosh, I don't like what this person did, but it's not actionable under your code. Uh, getting toward the end, we provide a, a definition of what frivolous is and specific standards for how you determine if a complaint is frivolous or not. To file a frivolous complaint in the city of Bastrop would itself become an ethics complaint in Bastrop. And while we don't have anything in this draft that actually provides for seeking civil remedies in court or criminal remedies for perjury, we do have language in this draft that warns people that is a possibility. So if perhaps somebody's accused of an ethics violation, it was frivolous and it was erroneous, well then they could pursue that action on their own outside in court for either abuse of process, which is a, a tort, uh, here in Texas, or it could be for defamation or slander. And so we specifically let people know, we're going to take these complaints very seriously. And finally, we have a form of internal appeals. I feel strongly about providing due process, so even though under this draft I've given you, the board of ethics is the final say in this process, if someone comes up with facts they didn't have the first time, they can appeal back to the board of ethics and ask, will you please reconsider your opinion? And at that point, the chairperson of the board of ethics will look at it, and the ordinance provides some standards for them to decide, yes, this is new information that was not available, set a new hearing to go through reconsideration, or just dismiss the complaints. And in terms of sanctions, there's a list of different letters, uh, a letter of warning, a letter of admonition, a letter of sanction. All of them are described based on the severity of the offense to help guide the board of ethics in terms of what sort of punishment, if any, they should give if they find that someone violated the code of ethics. So that's a quick summary of what the, what the new code does, um, in terms of procedures, in terms of substance. There, there's no real statement upfront in our current code about what your values are. What, what do you think the city of Bastrop stands for? What do you expect from those that serve the city of Bastrop? Uh, I think that's probably the most important part of an ordinance. It helps foster the conversation. And when it comes to decision-making, sometimes folks, they're not sure what to do, they look in your code of ethics and don't find a rule specifically on it. Well, if they can read your value statement, they should be able to figure out what they're supposed to do, even when there's no rule. And so I went ahead and offered you one that I thought fit Bastrop. Uh, when it comes to conflicts of interest, your current code does not specifically define what that is, so someone knows, yes, I have one, or no, I don't. I went ahead and put that in there. I used current state law, chapter 171 of the local government code, as the basis for defining conflict of interest, but then when it came to drawing the line, I lowered it by half. So if you were to adopt these standards, your conflict of interest standard is roughly twice as strict as state law is generally, and I would hope that, that the, the citizen ring would be pleased about that. Uh, I, I have a hard time understanding your current rules regarding when someone covered by this ethics ordinance can represent somebody else in front of the city, a board, or a commission, or the council. I get very specific in draft A about when that can occur and on what types of projects. And then also, I think this is an improvement when dealing with gifts. This comes up a lot. Uh, the point of it is, if you're being wined and dined by somebody who wants to get some form of approval from the city of Bastrop, we should limit that and, uh, per gift and per year. And in this regard, draft A is more stringent than state law is. But then I also make exceptions for the, for the tiny little stuff that shouldn't matter. You go to a reception, you go to a conference, you go to a seminar, vendors are handing out swag, none of that sort of thing should trigger our ethics process. It's minor, it doesn't cost much, it's unlikely to influence your decision-making. And so I was trying to build an ordinance that is realistic for how city officials truly function. One thing that not everyone's going to get unless they've tried to defend themselves under this ordinance or prosecute someone under your current ordinance is just the basic format and style of it. My hope is if you had dropped something like draft A, it will be a workable ordinance that's easy to amend in the future. People can find things quickly, they understand where things go, and it's easy to tweak as you live with it and learn what needs to be modified from it. So where we are now, this is just draft A. This is the first time you've seen it, it's the first time the public has seen it. Uh, I suggest that you consider it. Uh, if you have any specific feedback for me, please send it my way, and I'll put that into draft B, and we can reconvene at your next meeting on April the 10th, uh, to discuss whether or not you want to adopt it. Or of course, you could give me feedback saying, no, you're wedded to the existing one, uh, I've already shown Linda my red line markups to the existing one, and we can get that prepared for future adoption and just amend what you have and move on. At this point, I'm open to feedback from the city council.
So council, it seems like the most basic pla, thank you so much, Mr. Bejorkas. It seems like the basic place to start is, and I'll start, councilmember Peterson, I'll start with you. It seems like the basic place to start is, and I'll start, Councilmember Peterson, I'll start with you. Is your preference that we start with Draft A or go back to the old ordinance and try to redline it?
Draft A, please.
Councilmember Nelson?
Draft A, certainly.
Mayor Protem Schiff?
I agree.
Councilmember Ennis?
Draft A.
Councilmember Jones?
Draft A, okay, so yay, we won't be talking about the old ordinance anymore. Shockingly, I have some questions and comments, and I will send those to you in writing. And it sounds like we also will then have, I know we have some citizens that will be going over it in detail. Procedurally, is it easier for you if citizens write in their concerns? Or would you rather us do that in a public hearing at the April 10th meeting?
Mayor and counsel, for purposes of open and transparent government and an ability to participate, I would suggest one of two things. We could start 30 minutes earlier and have a workshop, or we could just block sufficient time on the agenda to give people an opportunity to weigh in and have public conversation so that we all appreciate not only what they say, but why what they say is important.
Absolutely, counsel, do you have a preference that we do it as a workshop ahead of time? Do you want to start at 6 o'clock? I think 30 minutes might be, I hope it, I'm seeing a no from Councilmember Jones. Do you want to just make it a part of the agenda and we'll do it as a? Councilmember Jones votes for not starting early and just doing it as part of the agenda. Councilmember Peterson, do you have a thought?
No, we can work on the agenda, I believe.
In the agenda, Councilmember Nelson, agenda, everybody's fine, okay. So for the public, this is in the packet, so everyone has access to Draft A. Secondly, the public knows that on April 10th, they will have an opportunity. We will follow our normal citizens' comments, three minutes, we'll take the input. And ideally, at the end of the discussion, we'll have, Mr. Borquez will have items that he can clarify with the hopes that perhaps, and not trying to impede your schedule, but as soon as possible, we would adopt a new ethics ordinance and move forward from that. And depending, not knowing what the changes are going to be, we may or may not be able to do that by the second meeting in April, was my point, because we don't.
Certainly. And if you or the council have specific questions, feel free to email me, call me, or I can meet with you. I can consider that stuff into Draft B before the 10th.
Terrific, terrific.
Mayor and counsel, you know, I appreciate the modesty of City Attorney Borquez, but in the municipal arena, he is the industry standard of ethics. If you had told me, not knowing who he was, to go out and hire somebody that is recognized statewide as being almost the godfather of ethics, he's standing before you. And I think the reason for this public hearing is he has a very intuitive reason for what goes in, what doesn't, and knowledge as to why it's important. And I think oftentimes ordinances get written not because we're trying to do the right thing, but we had something happen we don't like, so we write into the ordinance to ensure it doesn't happen again. And I call that much, I call that falling off the horse to the left, and then you write an ordinance to ensure you fall off the horse on the right, missing the point that the whole exercise is about riding the horse. So I think that by having a public hearing and giving our city attorney an opportunity to educate us on both the pros and the cons of including language regardless of where it comes from would be a different experience than we've had in the past. Because not only is he the godfather, but he has written a number of articles about this, and then he's called to various conferences to give presentations on this. So I think there's lots for us as a community to learn from Alan and take us on a journey, if you will, so that we end up with an ethic ordinance that we're proud of, but more importantly, we understand why the elements are in it that are adopted.
I'll just add to that, that there's no question this was, for those of you who read through all of it, it is a million times easier to understand and to go through, and just really a great, great piece of work. And some of the questions I have are really not substantive at all. It's things like, I'm not sure if we have department heads or if we call them directors. I mean, just really little tiny stuff, but we do want it to be complete because I believe, counsel, our goal is to have something that's clear for folks who are in office, clear for folks who are running for office, and clear for our citizens to know what they can expect from their officials and from their employees. So Alan, do you need any other direction from us?
Nope, got what I need.
Personally, thank you so much for providing this. Really, really appreciate it. Huge step in the right direction, and I think we'll get a final ordinance in short order. Thank you.
You're welcome.
We are at, we're ready to receive the monthly Visit Bastrop report. It has been two hours. Does counsel need a quick, we are going to be taking a five-minute break. It is, ah, help me here.
8:25.
It's eight, yeah, I think that clock's wrong. 8:20, 8:25, when we are in recess, we'll resume at 8:30.
Five other board members serving on that that went through and whittled, windowed, took it down. From that number down to a final three, we asked the final three to do a video presentation, and without question, Augustine knocked it out of the park with their video presentation. We'll come back at a follow-up meeting to give you more information about the process for the branding, but it will include input from the community and input from you as counsel especially, and input from city staff, and plus our main partners, BEDC, Main Street. All will have input into the brand process, so we're very excited about that.
Now, why don't you explain to the public what branding is? Because I think sometimes people are confused about what it is or isn't.
Well, I'll start out with what it's not. What it's not is a logo. It's not a tagline such as Heart of the Lost Pines. Brand tag, logo design and taglines can evolve out of a brand process, but most people think of the brand, the Nike swoosh, that the swoosh is their brand, that's not it. It is a brand promise, that's the most important thing. And it comes from the reaction of the product that you have by the customer and the consumer, and it's what they believe. So the value that Nike brings is performance enhancement. It's not a shoe, it's not a piece of apparel that you wear, but it's that they have a commitment to performance enhancement. And that brand promise is something that they have to consistently be able to match, or otherwise their customers will walk away from them. So when you talk about a destination brand, it is a statement that we can meet, that meets the customer's expectations more often than not. And that's what's so important about it. It's not being aspirational, we want to be this or want to be that. It's what we are, and it's what we can consistently produce. What's most important about what Augustine will do is they will come in with their expertise, and they will distill out what the customer perceives and experiences right now with our current destination, and will help find what is unique to help us elevate our message and our story amongst all the competition of other great small-town destinations in Texas. And that's the differentiation that we need, that we need to be able to clearly identify that story of what our brand essence is for Bastrop. So we're very excited about initiating the journey. It will take about three months for this process to be done and done correctly. And out of it, you might see suggestions for logo and taglines that will be coming out. But it will enable us to base our entire advertising campaign around brand standards and consistency in messaging that we hope that the entire community can adapt and accept. So that's why it's important to have community input and involvement in the process as we move forward. I'm also very excited to announce that we've finalized our full staffing for our first-year budget. April 2nd, we will have our final staff member join us. Her name is Kathy Ryer. She comes to us from Shenandoah, Texas, and has been with the city of Shenandoah for many years, about 10-plus years. She has worked for their Convention Visitors Bureau, a destination marketing organization, and various different positions. She started her career with Halliburton Companies and did communications. She has not only a bachelor's in communications, but a master's degree in strategic communications, and currently has been serving as interim city administrator for that. She has family in Austin and desires to get back more into communications and is thrilled by the opportunity to help us tell the story of Bastrop. She should be on our marketing team and be specifically focused on communications and beefing up what we're trying to do to get the story out to the customers that are buying our product. Also, we are scheduled to have a new photo shoot come up. We have been waiting for Bastrop to get beautiful, and that's not a statement of anything except for nature to take hold. The blue bonnets are out in the forest coming in, we've been waiting for the foliage to come in. We need some new photographs of this destination. We've got a lot of new things that are here that need to be represented. We want it to look good, so you will see activity of us doing a new photo shoot. We also are continuing with our event marketing side of things, and this is a very exciting time to be in Bastrop. A lot of great things that are happening, but of course, the thing that we're really excited about is our first big music festival. More than 30 bands, 40 different performances over a multi-day period that's coming up in May. Also in May is Tough Mudder. We have taken, because we have, through the hot funds, supported the Tough Mudder organization. We have made sure that the 7,000 attendees of that event know that Bastrop is here to help them either stay with a hotel, come shop, experience, and be part of that event. And also the Patriotic Fest, we've been in discussion with the Chamber about how we can help elevate that event to be an attractor and a draw, to bring people from outside of Bastrop to come in and spend their money. So we'll go through a couple of things. First of all, clarification on the lodging industry report. Why do we track this? Well, it's an, well, first of all, that's how our budget is derived. It's a combination of occupancy and average daily rate equals the amount that the hotels take in, and they pay a tax on that. That provides the funding for our hot tax, which provides support for our convention center, what we do, and other elements in our community that rely on hot funds. So we like to track it to see how we're doing. This does not, the Bastrop line does not include the Hyatt Lost Pines Spa and Resort. It is an imbalance that the company that does this data collection nationwide has to provide a separation. And because the product is so different from our existing product here, a resort versus our standard hotels, they are not included in that data. So when you look at the percentage occupancy increase, which by the way, for December was what I would call an outstanding increase at 21.6%, that was our hotels here in our city limits. It does not reflect what the Hyatt Lost Pines does. Line eight is the cluster of the properties that the Hyatt is in. And it's very hard, and that's by design, that you can't pick out one hotel's performance and say, this hotel is doing this versus that hotel is doing that. So when we look at that, we can't say how that is impacting us. However, I've talked with the general manager of the Hyatt and have gotten some basic feelings since October through this last month. They have basically been fairly flat, not down, not really up. They've been up in occupancy in some instances, but down in average daily rate, and then up in average daily rate and down some in occupancy, so it's been fairly flat. The great news about it is the rest of the year is looking outstanding for them. They had a great spring break. So in terms of hotel occupancy tax collections, I think we should be looking okay because our hotels in the city limits are performing exceptionally well. So I wanted to give you that background because that was not clear on the previous reports. Convention sales, we did assist. Assist versus originated is a definition of when we can help a hotel, one of our local hotels or the Hyatt, bring in a group by adding to the convention offer. Sometimes that's handling transportation to and from the convention center to the hotels. Sometimes it's enhancing a social event that they're doing, having a reception or whatever. When we are able to help close that piece of business, then we take an assist. But we delineate it from us originating that on that. So this was a pretty good impact in three assists. You'll note that our lead production in January, we had eight leads for a total of 2,392 room nights and a total attendance potential there in that regard. This is what Shane was active with, I'll just do the top part. Professional Convention Management Association, the convening leaders conference he attended, the Southwest Showcase, trade shows for meetings and education, and the Religious Conference Managers Emerged 2018 Conference. So in January, we were fairly active, out yet trade shows representing our meeting potential, yes.
Now, why don't you visit with the council about the challenges that y'all are having with booking conventions because of the robust business that our hotels are having, and help them understand that we will perhaps need to work with economic development to begin attracting some hotels?
Actually, in the February report, when I get to that, I have a perfect case, so we'll park that. If I somehow miss it, let me know. But I think we'll get to that here in just a moment. We'll go fairly quickly through this. This is our website overview. I think what's really interesting is out of the users that used our website, almost the majority of them were new users to our website, which is showing that our website is gaining traction in terms of being attractive. We had 1,060 new users on it. And I'll get real quick to an important page, and that's this page. It's kind of a red light, green light, yellow light traffic stop that is used here. These come from national averages in terms of how our website is performing, and we got green light all across the board on that. So the question has come up, how is our website performing? Right now, by industry averages and standards, it's performing well. It doesn't mean that we're where we want it to be. There's still a lot of work that we need to do with it and improvement, but we're pleased with the start of it and where it's going. So this was, out of this, as we've talked before, we won't go into detail on this, we do get a lot of data about who's using the website, what demographic they're coming from, what geographic segmentation they're coming from, and we'd use it to help refine our marketing approach as we move forward. Our social media activity has really jumped up, and part of that was our engagement with the Small Business Revolution. But we had a 48% in the number of posts over the previous month. And the previous month had increased by 12%. So we're having a continually increasing amount of social media activity. It just shows the number of impressions, number of engagements. These are metrics about average daily users and total engagements that went up 104%. Again, a lot of that was driven by the Small Business Revolution activity that we were engaged with. And you can see from the overview, this is Instagram, how we were trying to represent the destination, the total likes, commitments, and engagement. Fairly active through that, and then our marketing initiatives, and we've talked about some of that in my opening statements. We don't have that. So we didn't get both, we sent both, so I apologize. Okay, send the packet. So I will go not on screen, I apologize, but I will point out a couple of things that go to the questions city manager asked for. One, I will hold this up. We're starting to track for our city hotel properties. Zero is our baseline here in the center. Anything above that, our percentage increase is over in terms of hotel occupancy tax collections. And so basically, since October, we've had all positive reports in this. So here's to your question, Madam City Manager. We did have a very nice lead that we sent out for a Church of God conference that was very excited about booking the conference here. We were one of two finalists for the conference. It would have used our convention center. It was a total of 970 room nights, 400 attendance. What they needed was a room block commitment. It was over a nine-day period. It would have been a significant economic impact to our community. They needed a room block commitment from us of our hotels that are in our city limits of 125 rooms, 125 rooms for nine days. The maximum we could put together was 75 rooms that were being willing to be committed. Now, part of the problem is the point that we're running very high occupancies at this point in time on average, and the time that this convention was looking was in a traditionally strong period. They looked at the weekend use, and that seemed to be the problem when our hotels put their block together in respect. put their block together in response to our request, and they had, they felt that they had enough traditional business for the weekend that they didn't want to give us any block for this group. Well, that means that this strong piece of business that we had the opportunity to book was not going to be able to book, because we basically are running fairly tight for group business to book into our city. So that's something that is becoming a common theme for us, is that trying to get room block is not meaning that the hotels don't want to cooperate with us. It's that the transient nature of our business and what happens around, especially in Austin, impacts us and impacts our occupancy. So if there is something big, a Formula One event out at Circuit of Americas will impact us, South by Southwest will impact us. So if we're trying to bring groups in at those times, it's hard for us to get room block. It makes a case, a very strong case, that if we want the convention center to perform, we need additional room block to come into the community. So we are talking with economic development, we're talking with the city manager and mayor about what that looks like and if that's the next step that we should go through. So basically, the rest of the report for February, I wanted to get, it was also another positive increase in hotel occupancy tax collections. We also attended additional religious conference presentations and also had a collaboration, if you will, with a regional meeting to try to work regionally with some of our other destinations. Our website trends continued the same path that January did. In February, we had a thousand sixty, sorry, a thousand six hundred new users to our website out of a thousand seven hundred forty total users in that, so it showed an increase in that regard. And again, on the red light, green light, yellow light picture, we're all green lights in terms of bounce rates and all the things that are important, organic pages that are viewed, et cetera, for website performance. I'll jump over to social media. We showed another strong engagement with Facebook. We had five hundred eighty-five thousand, let me try that again, five hundred eighty-five thousand impressions and eight thousand five hundred engagements with Facebook and another strong increase, post-increase of eighty-two point nine percent over the previous month. So it was one of our strongest activities in terms of social media engagement for that. So-
Dale, don't you think that February also had, was impacted by Small Business Revolution and the voting leaks?
Yes, it was, definitely. So one of the challenges that we have is to keep that momentum going.
Absolutely.
And we're gonna, we're doing everything we can. Our new hire, Kathy, coming on board will help with that, because she'll be focused on a lot of that communication process. So it's been an exciting time to be in Bastrop. I cannot say again how much appreciation I have for this city and this community for the opportunity to be part of this, and the fact that you were so engaged and so on-point for the Small Business Revolution, which gave us exposure in a positive way that we could have never gotten without the performance of this community and this city to get us up in that final selection group. So kudos to the city for doing that. I'll stand for questions.
Thank you, Dale, and I very much appreciate you saying that you guys are taking the challenge to keep the momentum going, because clearly, Visit Bastrop is what we're all counting on to keep that positive momentum. Counsel, do you have any questions for Mr. Lockett? Counselmember Jones?
I do. Where is the music festival gonna be? How is that, what does that look like?
Most of the venues of the festival are going to be on Main Street. There are some exceptions. We do have some bad weather. We have the convention center on hold in case there's some bad weather for outdoor performances. The concept, the operator, by the way, of the festival is Texas Music Magazine, and their model for producing this is to provide the maximum economic generation, so they don't pick big fields where you just have people coming out. They pick venues that serve food and beverage so that you have an economic generation to go along with the activity itself. It's also kid-friendly. They just announced that they signed in Sugar Shack for a children's performance, musical performance, that will be held at the Sugar Shack, and so that is getting outside of the area a little bit off of the Main Street, but the majority of them will be on Main Street.
Dale, do you have an expectation of when all those venues will be finalized? Do you guys have a date when you're hoping to have that done?
The venues?
For the music festival, yes.
Yes, the venues have been finalized, and the final bands have just been locked in, and they are redoing a press release and announcement should be out next week.
Terrific, terrific. Counselmember Ennis, you had turned on your microphone. Did you have a question?
I just wanted to applaud you on your new hotel occupancy monthly percent change graph. The more graphs we have like that, that simplify the information, the better.
Well, hopefully, they all stay up in that very positive, positive ratio.
Gotcha.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lockett. Counsel, any further questions?
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Congratulations, and please tell your team how much we appreciate their hard work.
Thank you very much.
We're on six B. Received presentation of the unaudited comprehensive monthly financial report for the period ending February twenty-eighth, Ms. Waldron.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. This is our February report, and I did pause this month and spent quite a bit of time going back and looking over the forecast, and so I think that this report will be more reflective, and I really like that there's more green on this page, and as far as the warning is concerned, we'll go into detail further down in the report. Economic indicators are all green. The only one that was negative this month that we looked at was state unemployment was down just slightly. The noteworthy area, I always pause when I do this monthly, because I have to, you know, try to come up with something creative to be noteworthy that's financial-based. What I wanted to point out was after, financially, we're doing great, but gotta stick something in here that's clever, but comprehensive annual financial report, you know, it was presented during this month, and we did have a thirty-one percent ending general fund balance, which we had projected about a twenty-seven percent. So our policy is twenty-five, so this is something that we will be looking at going into our budget to see if those, that excess amount of fund balance can be used, you know, towards some one-time projects. Budget summary of all funds revenue, I have two funds. I'll go into the hotel tax a little bit later in the report. The hospitality in downtown is mainly tied to just the projected revenue that we had put into the budget, and we are just not meeting that projected revenue, so we are a five point two percent down from the forecast. We are looking at, they're bringing in some other different types of funds in that, in that department, and so hopefully, further on down in the year, we'll, we'll be seeing that change.
This is an area that, because it's juxtaposed to the presentation you just heard from Visit Bastrop, it's hard to appreciate why we were up twenty percent in January, up fifteen percent in February, and we're one point nine percent under budget. And so we have started some conversations internally about what this might mean, and we will, well, we have some ideas, and we'll be putting together a plan of action with the expectation, within the next sixty days, we'll be able to more definitively explain the discrepancy. But please note that we are aware of it, and we are researching what that means, and we will track it down.
Yes, and I was gonna go into it on the revenue page, but one of the things is that this forecast is what we budgeted. This budget was flat compared to what we had last year, and we did not meet budget last year, so that kind of plays into it as well. Also, I looked at year-to-date twenty eighteen compared to year-to-date twenty seventeen, and we are less than one percent up from where we were last year. So these are just some things I looked at to see, you know. He also reports on the month, and our revenue could come in, you know, a month later, some hotels pay quarterly, so there's all these factors that play into that. On the all funds expense side, Hunter's Crossing is my only non-positive fund, and we will be addressing that in a budget amendment probably in April, that we will have, we've got some legal fees that were not budgeted in that fund, and so we're gonna be bringing a budget amendment.
But to be clear about the legal fees, that is the statutory audit of the PID that council authorized and hired George Hyde to do, so I don't want people to think, you know, we're out suing people. No, we're trying to figure out the longstanding challenges we've had with the PID, so we can get that fixed.
And I feel like when we did give, when counsel gave the authorization for that, we knew there would be a budget coming, so you guys just, you're keeping up with the paperwork.
Yes, I just haven't-
Thank you for that reminder.
-pushed that paperwork through yet. Oh, general fund overview, positive. We're above in revenue, below in expenses, so that's always good. I do want to point out that some of our projects happen in the spring and the summer, so just because we're below in the forecasted expenses, sometimes that's just a timing in some of the projects. Sales tax has gone up in the last two months, and so right now, against our forecast, we're up one point eight percent. We anticipate that we will stay above now going forward, and that we will continue to monitor that. Property tax, we've already gone through our heavy months of collection on property tax. As of February, we are collected at ninety-eight percent of our budget, so we just have two percent left to go for the rest of the fiscal year, just to meet our budget amount, so that's very, very good. Water and wastewater fund as a whole is positive. They're up in their revenues, little, little below projected in expenses, but not, not by a lot. Looking at their revenues, they are one point six percent above where we forecasted them to be, so they're pretty much right on track. I did go back and spend quite a bit of time in the electric fund as far as just the forecasts and how those lay out, and trying to see historical but also seasonal, and so I've made some changes to the forecast. So year-to-date, right now, we are positive, and overall, in the fund, we are positive by about ten percent.
So that people don't think that we're playing with the numbers to make them positive, let me translate what she said just a little bit. There are really two seasons that electricity is sold in great demand, and that is winter, when it's really cold, and summer, when it's really hot. And so we can't take the electric fund and divide it by twelve and think we're gonna get where we needed to be. So Tracy went back and researched the months historically to define what we deem winter to be, and did the same thing for summer, and then adjusted her projections based on a winter electric season and a summer electric season, and that's the adjustments that she made, and when she did that, that's why it turned green. We're now matching revenues with, when the revenues are gonna be earned, and hopefully, we'll be able to cycle that better.
If you've just said that Ms. Waldron's accurately predicting when it's very hot and very cold over the next year-
That is not what she said. And the same, the electric revenue, so we've kind of touched on that. So right now, we're two point five percent above our forecast. Hotel occupancy tax fund as a whole, revenue and expenses is all, is in a positive, kind of already talked about, they're just a warning, one point nine percent. This is based on our forecast, so like I said, I did compare it to last year just to see what our year-on-year would be, and we're, we're just slightly above where we were last year. And as we stated, we have our legal fees in the packet.
Thank you very much, Ms. Waldron. Counsel, any questions? Ms. Waldron, you and your staff do an outstanding job. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
All right, we're moving on to citizen comments. Madam Secretary, do you have any citizen comments?
No citizen comments.
All right, thank you very much. Anybody in the room? Last call. Anybody wanna, I need you to fill out a- Okay, I apologize. She had put ten A, so she wasn't sure how to handle that, but we, since that's executive session, absolutely, Mr. Kelly, I apologize. Mike Kelly, you are signed up, and we're happy to hear from you.
Thank you, and I appreciate speaking to you this evening. With your forbearance, I'm in my last month of chemo, and so my breath isn't very strong, and my voice isn't very strong, but my prognosis is very strong. So please, please indulge me, if you will. I'm here tonight because of a conversation that occurred thirty minutes before you convened. Pine Forest Investment Group was informed by people in the Bastrop Independent School District tonight that Judge Poppy is going to buy the school district's interest in the land and use his bond reserve fund to begin developing Pine Forest. I think that that is ill-advised policy for you to join in with for three principal reasons. First, nobody is gonna issue any kind of title insurance on those lots while we're in the process of an appeal. Second, I'm gonna be very interested in what the underwriter to Bastrop County says about the use of the bond reserve liquidity fund to develop property. The use of that fund will result in a lower bond rating and a higher cost of borrowing for the county. I think that's ill-advised. Third, we are probably days away from an opinion by the Third Court of Appeals over this awful case, and if the county gives, and I'm estimating money here based on previous conversations, if the county gives BISD four hundred thousand dollars, which BISD desperately needs to repair and maintain their buildings, and the city, county, and school district lose any one of those four points in appeal, they're gonna have to give the four hundred thousand dollars back to somebody, and if they've already spent it and they don't have it to give, then it's another thing on them. I'd like to apologize to this council for my rather strident presentation the last time I spoke. I was very upset, because I had met with many of you when you were running for office, and you said you would work toward some sort of settlement of the Pine Forest case, and then nobody would talk to us. To this date, nobody has talked to us. There are so many misunderstandings about this. For instance, Drusilla Rogers, who is Judge Poppy's emblematic person who's gonna be badly affected by assessments, is basing her feeling on a badly drafted initial letter-
Mr. Kelly, we're not gonna talk about personalities and people, so if you would keep it specific to facts of the case, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am, and I appreciate the correction. If you examine those individuals who think they're gonna be assessed, you're gonna find that it's illegal under Texas law to assess them. If you'll just sit down and enter into the settlement conversations so we can clear this up, I beseech you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Is there anyone else signed up to speak? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak? Seeing none, we are moving on to the consent agenda. Madam Secretary, I'll read it since there's just one, but we're gonna consider action to approve City Council minutes from February twentieth, twenty eighteen workshop and the March thirteenth, twenty eighteen regular meeting. Happy to take a motion?
I move to approve.
I have a motion to approve.
Becca.
I have a motion to approve from Mayor Protem Schiff, a second from Councilmember Peterson. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
We have Protem Schiff.
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis.
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson.
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. We're now on nine A. Consider action to approve resolution number R two oh one eight dash one nine of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas approving the final plat known as Bastrop Broke, section one, being thirty point nine seven oh acres out of the Nancy Blakely survey, abstract ninety-eight- acres out of the Nancy Blakely survey, abstract 98, located south of State Highway 71 and north of the extension of Agnes Street within the city limits of Bastrop, Texas, as shown in Exhibit A, repealing all conflicting resolutions and providing an effective date. Ms. Bills?
Good evening. What we're going to talk about tonight is the final plat for Bastrop Grove, Section 1. Just to kind of, for the public and to refresh everyone's memory, we're at the subdivision process, the final step. We start with zoning. We have a preliminary plat that goes to PNC and council. A staff reviews the construction plans, and then we have the final plat, which is the step we're at. And Wesley had to key me up on everything for the discussion on the construction plans before he left. So the location of this property is south of 71 and then east of SH 304. It does connect back with the right-of-way of Agnes Street. The blue lines are the thoroughfare plan that'll connect Home Depot to Agnes, all the way back to the existing Agnes and Orchard on 71. The final plat is a requirement of our Bastrop subdivision ordinance and the Texas Local Government Code. All the plats that come before council, they must meet the ordinance and the local government code to be approved. And then once approved, they can begin the construction of the infrastructure for the subdivision. For this section, the overall preliminary plat was a little over 52 acres. For this first section, it's 30.97 acres. The existing land use out there is undeveloped. It's farmland. The zoning for this tract is C1 commercial, and then general commercial is the future land use plan, which the zoning compiles with. And we do have a collector-level street that's required with the extension of Agnes. For the construction plans that were approved by staff, there are several utilities that have to be extended to serve the subdivision. We have a proposed water line, a public water line, that'll run along the eastern edge of the property and then down Agnes Street. There's also going to be an extension of the public wastewater, and the developer will have to put in a lift station at this location that'll feed back to the highway at this point, and in the future, we'll be able to go gravity to the new wastewater treatment plant. Also, there is an extension of Agnes Street that will end here for now until the connection can be made to the existing section of Agnes. This is a partnership with the BDC and the Seton Hospital Group, and then also the current property owner of this area to get all of this in place for this development. Additionally, there will be a drainage channel that runs along the eastern edge of the property, and then will continue down, this is, north is pointed to the right, will continue south to go down straight to the river. So there will be, you know, onsite detention for this section of the plat. The preliminary plat was approved on July 27th by PNC and then by council on August 8th. And the applicant is here to answer any more in-depth engineering questions, if you have those.
I think you have another slide.
Oh, sorry. Do have one more slide. The next steps for this, the applicant intends to bond, put up the fiscal treaty for the public improvements, and then get the final plat recorded so they can begin the public infrastructure along with the site plan improvements that need to be made. They intend to break ground pretty quickly. We're currently reviewing their site development plan as well. They will be building the infrastructure, oh, I'm just hitting those buttons, and then we'll be able to issue building permits to start the vertical construction on the building.
Thank you very much, Ms. Bills. Counsel, do you have any questions? I'm happy to take a motion.
Move to approve.
I have a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Jones, a second from Councilmember Ennis. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Schiff?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you very much, counsel. The motion passes unanimously on 9A. Congratulations, and we're all looking forward to everybody breaking ground and getting on. Good night, Mr. Kirkpatrick. We're now on 9B. Consider action to approve resolution number R2018-1A of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas authorize repealing and replacing polling locations of resolution number R2018-03, ordering the May 5th, 2018 general election to adopt changes to early voting locations and election day polling locations, and establishing an effective date. Madam Secretary.
Mayor and counsel, on January 23rd, we brought an item before you to call the election for the May 5th City of Bastrop election. Since that time, we've had a change of events. At the time that this call of election was brought before you, BDC was, I mean, not BDC, sorry, the Bastrop Independent School District was in the election with us. Bastrop Independent School District has now been able to counsel their election. So having had that turn of event, we, that has caused us to have to change the early voting and election day locations. So that was in the call of the election when you approved it originally, so we need to amend that call by listing the new, the law requires us to list the voting locations. So the amending it, we needed to bring it back to have the new voting locations listed in the call of the elections, which will be, it'll be located at the Bastrop County Courthouse Annex lower level, 804 Pecan Street. That will be for early voting, which will begin on April 23rd and end on May 1st, as well as the election day voting will be at the same location.
Okay, so counsel and public, I think you're clear. BISD's not having an election, so we're not going to be voting over at their spot, so since it's only going to be the city and WCID, if we do that in a second, it would be voting at the county annex. That's all we're doing on this, is changing the location, and folks will vote early in the same place that they will vote on election day. Is that correct, Madam Secretary?
That is correct.
All righty, so unless you have further questions?
I move to accept this change.
I have a motion to approve from Mayor Protem Schiff, I have a second from Councilmember Jones. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Protem Schiff?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. The motion passes unanimously. We're now on 9C. Consider action to approve resolution number R2018-20 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas approving a joint agreement between the City of Bastrop and Bastrop County Water Control Improvement District Number 2 for the May 5th, 2018 general election for Bastrop, Texas attached as Exhibit A, authorizing the mayor to execute all necessary documents and providing an effective date. Madam Secretary.
Mayor, as I stated previously, the Bastrop Independent School District is now out of the election. They were able to counsel theirs. Since that time, the WCID is now holding an election. We're able to partner with them in a joint agreement, so that's what we're asking you to approve tonight, is the joint agreement between the City of Bastrop and WCID Number 2.
Counsel, you see in your packet, it's cheaper if we partner.
I move to approve this resolution.
I have a motion to approve from Mayor Protem Schiff, a second from Councilmember Jones. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Protem Schiff?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones? I mean, Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. Also unanimously approved. 9D. Consider action to approve resolution number R2018-21 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas approving an amended contract for election services between the elections administrator of Bastrop County and the City of Bastrop for the May 5th, 2018 general election for Bastrop, Texas attached as Exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents and providing an effective date. Madam Secretary.
Again, Mayor and counsel, this is a ripple effect from Bastrop Independent School District being able to counsel their elections. So we needed to bring it back before council to amend it, to amend this contract to show our early voting and election day voting locations.
Bridgette and her team do an excellent job, and we are leveraging on their ability to follow the laws and keep us all clear. Is that...
Yes, absolutely.
I move to approve this resolution.
Second.
I have a motion to approve from Mayor Protem Schiff, a second from Councilmember Jones. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Protem Schiff?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel, for that unanimous approval. So it's kind of late in the game to be knowing where you're going to be voting for early election and for the polls, so I would encourage everybody on the council and all of our citizens to be aware of the fact, it's going to be in the basement over at the annex. And if our reporters would like to make sure that that is on Facebook and in an article, that would be very much appreciated. With BISD not having an election, we want to make sure that we're fair to our citizens, and the best way to have the best representation is to have the highest participation. So please, please vote. I have to read it before we can jump up. We are now going to move to executive session. We're going to, we have two items to discuss. City council shall convene and disclose executive session pursuant to Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code to discuss and deliberate litigation matters with the city attorney regarding Pine Forest 6 et al. versus City of Bastrop et al. And 10B, city council shall convene and disclose executive session pursuant to Section 551.074 to conduct a semi-annual performance evaluation of the city manager as required by her employment agreement. It is 9:17, and we are now in executive session. Back into regular session. There is no action items as a result of tonight's executive session, so with a motion that Mayor Protem Schiff is making when he gets to a microphone, we have a motion, a second, and we are adjourned at 10:32. Thank you very much.